This meeting is called to order. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, and the time is now 6:00 PM. Before we proceed, I want to remind everyone of our rules of civility and decorum. Officials must first be addressed by the chair and not interrupt a speaker. Public comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Personal attacks, insults, displays of rudeness, and lack of respect are strictly prohibited. Disruptive behaviors from the audience, including but not limited to yelling, stamping of feet, are likewise prohibited. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be asked to be removed from the chambers. City Clerk, please begin the roll call.
Mayor Penzerga?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Turkin?
Present.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, City Clerk. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Pastor Emily Ash. Good evening and welcome, of First Presbyterian Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by a very special guest this evening. Her name is Sloane Kelly. Let's all stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's give our souls a moment of peace. Wonderful God, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, even daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we encounter afterwards, ready us to make every moment count. In our Lord's name, we pray these words. Amen.
All right, Sloane.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was... Thank you, everyone. City Clerk, I believe you have an announcement regarding the municipal elections.
Thank you, Mayor. The city received certified results from the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections Office for the March 14, 2023 municipal election. Per the charter, candidates have to win 50% plus one vote, which was not attained in District 2. Therefore, a runoff election will be taking place on Tuesday, March 28, 2023, between the candidates with the highest votes, Rudra Hay and Mac McGray. For Commission District 4, incumbent Amy Kelly won with 64.51% of the votes. And that's it.
All right, thank you, City Clerk. Now, for the moment we've been waiting for, we will now swear in the newest member, however, not very new, because you've served already, but officially elected into the role, Commissioner Amy Kelly. So I'm going to ask if she could move to the podium. And also, I'm going to call up Judge Collins, who will be swearing her in this evening.
Put her family Bible in.
And if the family of Commissioner Kelly would like to stand next to her.
It's quiet.
All right, you need to hold it up. Left hand on the Bible, right hand up.
Please repeat after me. I, Amy Kelly.
I, Amy Kelly.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The state of Florida.
The state of Florida.
And the city of Boynton Beach.
And the city of Boynton Beach.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution and the laws of the state.
Under the Constitution and the laws of the state.
And the city of Boynton Beach.
And the city of Boynton Beach.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of Commissioner, District 4.
Perform the duties of Commissioner, District 4.
Of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida.
Of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Collins. And Commissioner Kelly, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. First, I just, I wanted, I'm just, I'll make this brief. I wanted to thank my family and friends and my supporters throughout the city of Boynton Beach and outside for all the encouragement and support through this process. It is one that, until you've done it, you don't know what you're getting into. So, thank you for this support, but most importantly, to the voters of the city of Boynton Beach, not only in District 4, but as you know, as city commissioners, we represent the entire city. And so, I attended forums in other parts of the city. And so, I just thank them for opening up, you know, opening up the city to hearing what our vision is and what my vision is. And so, I, you know, I thank you. You know, Boynton Beach is a diverse and vibrant community with lots of different people. And I'm excited to continue serving the city and the residents. This is a tremendous honor to be elected as a city commissioner. And I take it very seriously. And I will promise that I will do the best that I can for the residents and for also my fellow commissioners, because we are in this together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we're going to move on to the next portion of this evening's agenda, which is, of course, agenda approval. Any additions, deletions, or corrections from my colleagues, or even reorganizations? We can begin with, Commissioner Kelly will begin with you, and we'll go around the dais.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to get a date certain. Catherine, can, when do you think we can? I want to move the advisory board to a time certain for us to talk about the advisory boards. It's on future agenda items. So, Catherine, are you okay with talking about that maybe the second meeting of April?
Yep.
Okay. So, we can just add a date to that, so that we have that coming.
Second meeting of April?
Right.
All right, this is a discussion, so absolutely, let's do that. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, that's good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Turkin?
I just have some comments for staff. I don't have any amendments. Do you want me to share those now?
We'll do the comments, no, we'll do the comments next item, which is informational items.
Sure.
All right, sounds good. Vice Mayor Cruz?
I have no amendments to the agenda, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hay?
No, I have no additional deletions.
All right, I have none for myself as well. Now, we have a date certain, next meeting for the advisory board discussion. We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we're moving on to informational items, as well as disclosures by members of the city commission. Let's begin on my right, Commissioner Hay. Any informational items or disclosures?
Okay, thank you. Just good evening to everyone, and again, graduation to our new Commissioner Amy Kelly. I had the opportunity to spend a luncheon with the League of Cities of District 2 and District 4. This is outside the general meeting. It was a great meeting, and a lot of good information was discussed. I also attended the 32nd Love for Literacy Luncheon, which was very informative. I also attended Vince Wilfred Motivational Spiegel at the Isaia Hester Center. There were quite a few kids there and parents. And I want to thank Frank Ireland and Mr. Young, Casey Young, for coordinating that effort. That was very motivational for our kids, especially to have NFL players come back here to Boynton, where they grew up, and share how they went through the process to become the successful individuals that they became. I also attended on Saturday a food distribution at New Disciples Church. We fed over 500 families, gave them food, and very, very good food. And it was very well coordinated. I want to thank PD for having officers there to make sure that the order and everything was maintained. Lastly, I want to talk about the scholarship, the 11th anniversary college scholarship luncheon that I went to. There were at least 30 kids who received some form of scholarship. And that was that, can't remember what their name and place is now. Thank you, Mirasol, which is out across from PGA National. I did see that, okay? Right across from PGA National, and that was well, well, well-attended. I do want to go back to, a few weeks ago, we had the pickleball court. I just don't feel we spent enough time on that. That was a tremendous success. People are just excited, and it's, you just might have to get in line to get scheduled to play on that, on those pickleball courts. They're very well structured, and it's organized, and this is the common thing. Even I'm going to learn how to play pickleball, so, don't laugh. But I just want to thank our Recreation Department and the whole city of Boynton for turning in that direction, because that is the upcoming sport. And it's for everybody, old and young. So, thank you again. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. I have to follow up on that with you. We had a great time at the Pickleball Grand Opening. Thank you to you and the mayor for being there, present. It was a really great time. We also had one of our county commissioners present that day. And I do want to give a special thank you to our event staff, as well as our Parks and Rec staff, because they put together goodie bags for all of us. And it was very special. It had like the pickle racket and the ball and a towel, and it was just such a great... You guys didn't have to do that, but I definitely thank you for doing it. So, kudos to staff. I do want to make an announcement for the grand opening of the Wawa. I know my district, District 1, has been looking forward to that for a really long time. And for the residents of the entire city, it's going to be happening this week. It's going to be March 23rd. Doors open at 8:00 in the morning, and it's at 2505 West Woolbury Road in Boynton Beach, Florida. Really excited, this new business coming to our city. I know it's been a long time coming, and people have asked me, when is it happening? Well, it's happening this week. So, for anybody watching, we hope to see you there. No, and then, no more disclosures for me.
All right, thank you. Let's go with Commissioner Turkin, informational items and disclosures.
I don't have any disclosures. You know, I'd like, I'd like staff to look at, you know, a portion of our code where it discusses, I think it's, you know, anything under $1,000 of repair for maybe a fence, you know, wouldn't require a permit. I think we need to look at, that needs to reflect CPI, because the cost of materials has increased significantly. And so, if we're, if we're making adjustments across the board, whether it's services, salaries, I think we should be mindful of the residents too, when it comes to our code as well. You know, the other thing, you know, in relation to that is, you know, a portion of our, you know, I kind of want to look at the code as a whole. You know, there was a situation with an individual, not in my district, that, you know, had built a shed, because in our code it says, you can build a shed under 100 square feet, you know, very general terms, and this individual built under that. And, you know, unfortunately, had a medical incident where he was hospitalized. They were hospitalized, you know, for quite some time, and ended up occurring some fees to the city and is now a magistrate. And so, you know, I look at that as, you know, if our language is a little bit misleading and life happens, our residents shouldn't have to pay for that. And so, I'd like staff to, you know, look into that. You know, and I think this is just code in general. And then, in addition, you know, I'd like staff to look at the accountability piece with some of our community standards officers. I got a phone call that they saw a vehicle that was parked for like two hours during the workday, and this individual is just sitting in their vehicle. If I'm a taxpayer and my tax dollars are going to an individual and they're not moving, they're not working, that's unacceptable. And so, I want to make sure that we have that accountability piece, because I don't think any of us should be getting a phone call about that. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for voicing this, because I had not heard about this. I am curious to know more about this code situation. As far as community standards, also known as code enforcement, that is, that is in the domain of the city manager, so please do connect with him. And then, I'll connect with him as well, to see if, you know, just to make sure it's followed up on. Thank you for bringing that to light. Commissioner Kelly?
I do not have any informational items or disclosures.
All right, thank you. As for myself, I just want to disclose that I did have a conversation with Bradley Miller regarding item 8A. Yes, that is 8A. All right. And that concludes all the informational items and disclosures, unless there's anything else from my colleagues. That was it? All right, excellent. So, we're going to move on to announcements, community, and special events and presentations. The first item, 3A, is just that I have to proclaim, for legal purposes, that there is a municipal runoff election. So, I type in "Surga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim that a runoff election will be held at the city of Boynton Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, on the 28th day of March 23rd, excuse me, March 2023, to elect the one commissioner from District 2 to serve a three-year term expiring in March 2026. We have several precincts. You can either vote at Boynton Beach High School, Intracoastal Park Clubhouse, Temple, Bath, Kodesh, Village Royale in the Green, Carolyn Sims Center. And of course, that has to be based on your precinct. And we do have this information on the city website. If you'd like to know where exactly you'll be voting, but those are the voting locations. The voting hours are from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And again, that is next week, Tuesday, is that correct? Next week, Tuesday, thank you, City Clerk. The next item here is a proclamation to proclaim March 31st, 2023, as the Lord's Place Sleepout Homelessness Awareness Day. Mr. Phillips is here, Vice President of Housing Services for the Lord's Place, will be accepting the proclamation. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas homelessness is a serious social and economic issue impacting all levels of our society, the city of Boynton Beach and the Lord's Place recognize that all people deserve respect and a place to call home. And whereas the city of Boynton Beach and the Lord's Place are partners in providing that respect and pathway to a brighter future for men, women, and families who are homeless in our community. And whereas the city of Boynton Beach extends its appreciation to the Lord's Place for its leadership on this critical social issue and its wide array of successful programs and services, changing the lives of the homeless, one life at a time. And whereas the Lord's Place will hold its 16th annual sleepout to end homelessness on Friday, March 31st, through Saturday, April 1st, 2023, at Roger Dean Chevrolet Stadium in Jupiter. The Lord's Place and the city of Boynton Beach recognize the many community members supporting sleepout, including the honorable Ann Brown. And whereas, the mission of the Lord's Place is to break the cycle of homelessness by providing innovative, compassionate, and effective services to men, women, and children in our community. Now, therefore, I type in "Surga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim March 31st, 2023, as the Lord's Place Sleepout to End Homelessness Awareness Day." Mr. Phillips, are you here this evening? All right, come on down.
Yes, on behalf...
Microphone.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Donna Stanley, CEO of the Lord's Place, we would like to thank the Commissioner and the mayor for this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. I've been to your location, as you know. You guys are doing great work. Absolutely, Commissioner Hay.
I just wanted to say something to Kevin Phillips. He went to school with my son through high school and everything, and I just want to let you know, man, you're doing an outstanding job. Keep doing what you're doing, Kevin, okay? But I do, I still want my trench coat back, though. Thank you, Mayor.
Got to have that back. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation to proclaim Friday, March 24th, 2023, as Path to College Turn the Tables Career and Internship Expo Day. Christina Romulus, Director of Programs for Pathway to College, will accept the proclamation. Is Ms. Romulus here this evening? All right, so I'll read the proclamation into the record, and we'll just send this to her office. All right, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city of Boynton Beach takes special notice and acknowledges exceptional organizations that help residents who live, work, and play within the jurisdiction. And whereas, in 2017, Path to College was founded with the mission to expand minds, that ignite potential, and help the most overlooked students in our country get into the best colleges with the best scholarships. And whereas, the Path to College, in partnership with the city of Boynton Beach and Career Source Palm Beach County, will host a second annual Turn the Tables Career and Internship Expo, a county-wide initiative that focuses on exposing local high school and college students to internship and career opportunities with an emphasis on STEM careers. And whereas, Path to College invites all residents to join us on Friday, March 24th, 2023, at the Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, to meet dozens of employers and hear from panelists ranging from companies in the health tech industry like Modernizing Medicine, to energy industry like Florida Power and Light. Now, therefore, I type in "Surga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim March 24th, 2023, as Path to College Turn the Tables Career and Internship Expo Day." And we will make sure to reach out to Ms. Romulus to get her this proclamation. The next item on the agenda is, I believe it's her final proclamation for this evening. It is to proclaim the month of March as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month. Will Romulus from Digital Vibes Inc. will accept the proclamation? The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city of Boynton Beach takes special notice and acknowledges exceptional organizations that help residents live, work, and play within the jurisdiction. And whereas, in 2010, Digital Vibes was founded to reach out to underserved youths in Palm Beach County by empowering them through dance, fitness, tech, and the arts. And whereas, Digital Vibes Inc. and Palm Health Foundation present the annual challenge, which takes place annually from March 1st through 31st, and encourages individuals within and beyond Palm Beach County to take charge of their health by participating in fun fitness exercises. And whereas, the Let's Move Initiative was originally introduced on a national level by First Lady Michelle Obama in 2010, with the goal of decreasing childhood obesity throughout the United States, due to the fact that nearly 1 in 3 children in the United States are overweight or obese. And if this problem persists, 1/3 of all children born in 2000 or later will suffer from diabetes at some point in their lives or will face other obesity-related health problems, such as health disease, high blood pressure, asthma, and cancer. And whereas, Digital Vibes and Palm Health Foundation invite all residents to take the challenge to move by forming teams, registering online, committing to exercising for at least 30 minutes a day throughout the month of March, and logging their minutes on the Let's Move website, www.letsmovepalmbeachcountypbc.org. In 2012, Palm Beach County logged 100,000 minutes in the first year of the challenge, and we have met the challenge every year since, rising in 2021 to over 59 million minutes logged. Congratulations. Now, therefore, I type in "Surga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month." Will Romulus, are you in the audience? Come on up.
Oh, man, thank you so much. We truly appreciate you guys. I'm accepting the challenge. It's the whole month of March, and 30 minutes a day, that's all it is. Create a team, form a team, and do any type of physical activity. It could be dancing, it could be walking, it could be running. Whatever it is that you do, just stay active. And the main goal with this is to help combat the childhood obesity epidemic that's going on and so on and so forth. That's what this challenge is all about. And the other key thing about the challenge too is to unite Palm Beach County. And that's, that's one of the main things that we focusing on. I would also like to invite you guys, everybody here, to take part of this nice event that Barbara and her phenomenal team putting together to close out the Let's Move Challenge here in Boynton Beach and so on and so forth. So, that's March 31st, from 12 to 3:00 PM. So, I would like to invite you guys to come out and join in. So, we appreciate you guys, you know, keeping this challenge alive. And we appreciate the city of Boynton Beach for accepting this challenge and also being an example for other cities to follow. You know, it's very, it's very, very, very crucial that we stay moving, and that's what this challenge is all about. Let's move, everybody.
Thank you. The next item is an announcement that the Boynton Beach Gold Coast Band's Out of This World Concert, that's the title, Out of This World, is on Sunday, March 26th, 2023, starting at 3:00 PM. The band will perform at the First Baptist Church located at 301 North Seacrest Boulevard. Tickets are $10 and free for children 12 years of age or younger. To purchase tickets, you can visit goldcoastband.org or at the door at the day of the concert. Again, that's March 26th, Sunday at 3:00 PM. They always come with my recommendation, because they are phenomenal.
They are.
The next item is an announcement from Development Services. I'd like to call up two staff members, Michael Griffin and Savan Remy. If you could please share this announcement with the community.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Michael Griffin, an application technician with the city's development department. This is Savan Remy, an application specialist. In February, our manager, Slicka Brown, mentioned that she wanted to start a community outreach program where the development department got a little more involved with our community as a whole. So, she asked us to start that program. And I wanted to take a moment tonight and announce our first event will be a pop-up permit event. We'll be hosting that here at City Hall in Room 115 tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30. So, we just hope to go over some of the general permitting information that people may or may not be privy to. We want to show them our new program, Sage's Gov, take some questions, and provide after-hours services that people may not be able to utilize during the workday. So, we just hope to provide a little bit of transparency from the department to the public and hopefully make the department a little more friendly with the public. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, the next item, it says here, Mayor and Commission to recognize representatives from the Joe DiMaggio Children's Health Specialty Center for donating $5,000 as the 2023 Magic Wheels and Special Deals Event Title Sponsor and Chariots of Love Representatives for their contribution to design and build the Magic Wheels for 11-year-old Giovanni. Thank you to everybody who was involved in that. I'm going to ask Justin Johnson, Recreation Parks Marketing and Outreach Manager, to provide a recap of the Magic Wheels and Special Deals Event and Barrier-Free 5K.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, city dignitaries. I was going to invite Stephanie Soplop, our ADA coordinator.
My, I'm too.
Oh, there she is. She, I was going to give her up and that she conveniently had a phone call when it was time to make the presentation. But she made it back in time. Yes, the Magic Wheels and Special Deals is an annual event where we give away a customized themed mobility device to a local youth. This year, as the announcement stated, it was 11-year-old Giovanni who received a transformer-themed mobility device, which allows him to sit, move while sitting down, but also go stand to sit, so he can stand as well, which aids in the digestion. Also, the sister event, Giovanni also served as the honorary starter for the Barrier-Free 5K, which was held the following morning at Barrier-Free Park, which enrolled 212 participants, which I believe is the second highest in the event's history. And we also have a video recap of the, of the Magic Wheels and Special Deals Event, at which, after which, we have the Chariots of Love and Joe DiMaggio representatives here. And then there's also one who would like to speak virtually.
Okay, I'm going to be playing the video now.
So this was a magical special event. We had a lot of people here today. This is just one of the many ways the city of Boynton Beach celebrates inclusion. We love, looking forward to seeing Giovanni get his chair today. It was so exciting. And this is something he can actually use. Giovanni was the man of the hour tonight. He was our special guest. We were so excited to see him.
I'm overwhelmed. I'm so excited that Giovanni was able to get this opportunity to get something custom made to his liking. So I'm just, I'm overwhelmed. At first, I was like, oh, my God, it's huge. But then, you know, when it transformed, I thought that was awesome.
So for the last four years, Chariots of Love has picked volunteers to create a build team and create a fantasy for a special needs child right here in Palm Beach County. Giovanni received a standard from us about a year and a half ago, and we just thought he was the perfect candidate. We love his smile and his nature. He's a good size, a good age to receive a Magic Wheels.
To the Chariots of Love team, I just want to say thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for selecting Giovanni and giving him this opportunity to customize something for him and his liking.
As I mentioned, there are some of the people who helped make this possible who would like to comment. While they're making their way up, I would like to add an additional comment, make an additional announcement, excuse me, that on Saturday, April 1st, April is World Autism Month. In, in recognition of that, we will be hosting a Adaptive Pickleball Clinic at Ezel Hester Community Center. Starts at 9:00 AM on Saturday, April 1st. So we encourage everyone who can make it out to that event to come on out.
Wonderful. Thank you. Please approach the podium.
This is Stephanie Soplop, the ADA Title II Coordinator. And I just want to give a special thanks to Valerie Mathieu and the Chariots of Love team. This is the fourth year that we've been so honored to have them choose the child for us for the Magic Wheels and also volunteer their time, their efforts, their creativity and talents to build the Magic Wheels. So Valerie, if you'd like to say a few words as well, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you, the city of Boynton Beach and the members here today. It's an honor to be selected to pick one of our candidates from Chariots of Love, one of our recipients, and then to build a fantasy for them, just to brighten the life of a special needs child in our community. And it, it brings out our creativity and our community members. I have Maribeth Lenz with me, Rosalyn Cohen, and Jeff Cohen. And we had Melissa Butterworth. She was not able to be with us tonight. She's not feeling well. This is the members that helped us build this. It was actually built in my, in my living room. So it's a home-built craft that just lightens the life of somebody with special needs and the community to witness it is really something special. Thank you for having us.
And we also have some plaques that we would like to give, and I don't know if the mayor is able to come down. We can take a quick picture.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. We also have Jenna Shin on the GoToWebinar. She's from the Joe DiMaggio Children's Health Specialty Center. So as Justin mentioned, they've sponsored this event for the past four years. We're very grateful. They sponsor the Magic Wheels event, which allows us to do even more and make it bigger and better each year. So if she could have a few moments to say a few words as well?
Hi, everybody. This is Jenna. I hope you guys can hear me okay. Thank you for having me tonight. And I apologize I couldn't make it in person. But really, the thanks goes to all of you guys. I want to keep it short and sweet because you guys are, are the magic makers here. We're extremely happy and appreciative to support the event and, and to have done so for the last couple of years, and we look forward to doing it in the future and continuing this effort. But kudos to the city, kudos to Chariots of Love, kudos to all of the partners who were a part of the event and supported the event. And like I said, we're just happy to be a small part of it. So it's such an amazing cause. And we look forward to continuing to be a part of the community and the growth of the community in the city of Boynton Beach. And we are here to support the residents and the families and the kiddos here and in South Palm Beach counties. So we have been grateful to have our outpatient specialty facility in Wellington for the last few years now. And, and we look forward, like I said, to just continuing to serve the community here in South Palm Beach. So you guys know where to find us if you need anything, and, and we're here for you guys. So thank you again for, for letting us be involved.
Thank you.
And we do also have Eugene Fagan from the Greater Boynton Beach Foundation here. He said he doesn't need to come up and say a few words, but we do want to say thank you. They have supported the Barrier-Free 5K for many years now. We could not do this without them at all. So we want to thank them as well.
Thank you. And thank you, Stephanie and Justin. All right, before we proceed to public audience, I want to remind everyone of the following. As always, each speaker is limited to three minutes. Comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to an individual on the dais or in the audience. Personal attacks, insults strictly prohibited. This is a time to be heard. This is not a Q and A. And what that means is if you have a question, please leave your contact information with any of our staff members in the back, and we will connect with you shortly. After we complete all those in the chambers to speak, we will proceed with those online. After all in-person public comments have spoken, that will be the end by which we will take digital hands online. All right, please begin to approach the podium. We do have two podiums. We'll go back and forth. Please state your name for the record and begin when you're ready. Good evening.
Good evening. Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. First of all, I want to remind everyone this Friday night is Blooming in Boynton. The event I've put together with the city, I've got to say kudos to Eleanor, Gabrielle, and Melanie, who've done an outstanding job helping me get this event off the ground for our first ever time. Catherine as well. Hopefully, this will morph into a multi-year event because I think it's going to go over well. So I hope everyone can come out. It's free and it's fun and, you know, food and free movie. Yay. And of course, free plants. My second thing I wanted to talk about, and I know this is kind of outside of your purview, but you know, some of you may be sitting on the, the county, you know, street, was it the Metropolitan Planning Board, the one that handles the streets. So I, I think you all need to be looking at Old Boynton Road as you head towards Congress. In the last couple of years, they've added a median strip for the heck of it. You know, a little funny shaped median right there, like where you go to turn into Target. And I think it's meant to prohibit people from turning into the Oakwood Square Plaza, except no one does that because we all make a little half U-turn and then turn in. It's not serving a purpose. It's recent. It's new. It's not doing anything except apparently being a good target for people deciding to run over it and smash and knock down the tree and, you know, the assorted signs they put there. So let's just get rid of this. Second of all, something you should be thinking about is that plaza has expanded massively. And I know because I work in there, Amazon Fresh is going in at some point. Whenever they decide they're ready to reopen their stores, they're just sitting empty all over the country right now. So you absolutely cannot put another car on Congress Avenue. We all are aware of that. The only entrances into that plaza are the two entrances on Congress and then that side one on Old Boynton Road. Whoever is on this planning board for the county really should be, you know, going to the county and saying, let's cut the crap. Let's make this a proper turn-in, a proper entrance. You cannot evacuate that entire plaza and hundreds of people. There's 145 people in my office alone because we are the number one, you know, Coldwell banker in the state of Florida, number three in the United States. How do you expect to get all these people out, plus all the people shopping and all the employees with two entrances on Congress, with Congress a disaster every moment of every day? So they really need to work on that side entrance, get rid of that median. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, for, you know, writing all this down to take this forward. The police officers I speak to hate it as well because we all go, this serves no purpose. This median is new. It's not a long, I mean, I've driven and turned left in there my entire life. So this is something new, and this is something that needs to be worked on. And this needs to come from the commission and go to the county, to the appropriate person, to get rid of that median and let people turn in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other in-person public comment speakers? Now's the time to be known and approach the podium. Otherwise, we'll begin online. I see another person. Come on up. And please state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
I am Dr. Piotte Blas. My address is 113 West Tara Lakes Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. Was that clear enough? I hope so. I just have some informal comments. My general comment is that we probably have the best city in the world, and you guys are doing a super job. So it's in every way beautiful. As you all know, I had a little difficulty because I was doing too much mathematics at Starbucks, but it was resolved, and, and my mathematics is going well. I know you all helped me a little bit. And I want to update you a little bit on what I am doing. So I'm doing mathematics in the context of University of Boynton, which is very informal, but we do have people doing serious work at all levels. I am also quite involved with, you see, my family, Jewish family, is originally from the Ukraine. And if you know Zelensky, he's actually our second cousin. So I'm kind of proud of him how he is standing up for liberty, the president of the Ukraine. So I'm not free to comment on everything, but we're doing everything possible to, to help them. And one, I'm known to be a bit of a visionary, so let me be a visionary. I'll remind you guys that the World Wide Web was actually invented in Boynton Beach. I know it's incredible and everybody claims it, but we did it in the 1980s. Right now, the next vision is quite interesting. Boynton Beach happens to be the closest point to the Gulf Stream, the gateway to the Gulf Stream. But I think the gateway can go the other way. We are designing an energy system. It goes back to Jacques Cousteau, kind of a water mill. So the water will turn a turbine and produce electricity. Some of them may be at the surface, some of them may be deep inside. You may be curious to know that the optimal point is three and a half miles out into the ocean. Don't visit there too much, but I've had divers check it. So just, I know, I have a few seconds. So if the project succeeds, we're going to have a huge source of green energy. And energy is cool. It's kind of money, too. So God bless you all. I don't have any more inventions today. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, last call for in-person public comments before we go online. All right, I see one more person.
Yeah, the gentleman who invented the internet, he dropped about 7,000 sunflower seeds all over.
All right, hello? Please state your name for the record.
Ernest George McNally, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. So here's what's going on. I was, I'm doing a lot of studies on the DUI unit in Boynton Beach, the police unit. And I'm doing a lot of studies on how it's not functioning and how, right in the middle of investigations, officers are being called and being told to let the person go. So I have the documentation and everything. What I find interesting is I can't, the city manager won't talk to me. The police chief won't talk to me. Not one commissioner will return an email. I have all the documentation. I have witnesses. I have a tremendous case, what went on the night of the boat show, where, you know what happened? There was a fatality, right, of a, of a police officer. That whole case just seems to be sealed. I can't figure out what's going on. Nobody will answer any questions about anything. And no matter what case you talk about, the Bernard Wright case suspiciously getting run over, right? And nobody wants to talk about it. How come the Highway Patrol wasn't called? That's standard procedure. How does Boynton Beach handle a case up in, you know, out of the area? What is going on here? Why does no one respond? Why are we finding out that certain people in the government are calling political opponents BITCHES? That certain people are going to the hospital for stress and psychiatric problems? That they're having meltdowns in the meetings? I mean, what is going on here? How come everybody sits like nothing's happening? Really? Do I have any time left? Yeah. And, and then look at the elections. It's always the same thing. Certain people get priority. They get to put their signs wherever they want, right next to the election thing. And then if you go and try and document it, they say, oh, you can't vote now. Well, why? You're allowed to take pictures of election violations. You're allowed. That's what this county election person told me. You see something, take a picture. They come running out of my booth, ah, you can't vote. Get out of here, McNally. Really? They were trying to prevent me from voting. Really? And you know what? It keeps going on and on. All, all these bars that you claim are like the basis of America. Look at the crime coming out of Hurricane Butcher Bar, the cafe, Georges Banana. And you hold these out as the saviors of Boynton Beach? If you ever enforced the DUI and the drug enforcement laws, those two places would be out of business and no longer able to make so many political contributions to everybody I'm looking at.
Can I get an extra 10 minutes?
All right, that concludes in-person public comments. IT, do we have anybody online with their, with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have one single hand raised.
All right, and what is the name? And you can unmute them. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining on the clock, and don't forget to say your name for the record.
Our name is Katie McLaughlin. Katie, you're unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Commission. I am so pleased to see you all here. Really, the only reason that I raised my hand tonight is... Yes?
Could you please say your name for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Katie McLaughlin. I've been a Boynton Beach resident for 25 years. So really, the only reason I raised my hand tonight was to congratulate Ms. Amy Kelly and to say thank you to all of you. I strongly believe that we have such an amazing team up there, and you guys are doing the best job you possibly can do. And I look forward to seeing everything that you accomplish in the months and years to come.
All right, thank you so much. And IT, just want to confirm that is the only hand, right?
That was the only hand raised in the time you've asked for speakers.
All right, public comments are now closed. Thank you, everyone. We are now moving on to administrative, which is to appoint eligible members of the community. to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. We have an opening in the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Education and Youth Advisory Board, Historic Resources Preservation Board, the Library, Library Board. And now to the Recreation and Parks Board. We do have one applicant, a Bernard Jawarski. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Probably not. Commissioner Turkin, it is your nomination for an alternate. It is a one-year term. Would you like to make a nomination?
Yep, I'll nominate Bernard.
All right, is there a second? There's a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of appointing Bernard Jawarski to the alternate position in the Recs and Park Board, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Congratulations. If I may just take a moment to speak to my colleagues regarding appointments to the advisory boards. And I wanted to do this after you made that appointment. But I want to ask that from now on, that we not only just take applications online. And I think that is something we need to review. But if you could please make sure to meet with these individuals. I want to make sure that these people are people that, you know, we have connected with. Their values are in sync with our vision and so on. I know that Commissioner Kelly, you wanted to have a longer conversation on advisory boards, but I'll leave my comments there. I just want to keep it brief. Yes, Commissioner Turkin?
The other thing, you know, I want to, and I brought this up with city staff earlier, is if there is more than one applicant to a position, I think those applicants should roll over for that next avail- availability. Because what I've seen happen in the last year is you'll have applicants, more than one, and then they have to reapply. And I, and, and sometimes vacancies happen, someone resigns from a board. So I think having that steady pool makes things easier, especially with respect to having a connection with someone. For example, the PND Board, alternate position, I knew both those applicants. The one that was not appointed will now have to reapply if there's another vacancy. And, you know, we all have many things going on. So I think keeping those names up there is important. And it just makes things seamless and more efficient.
Thank you.
Just curious, I thought that was the case. City Clerk, is that, is that, how does that work? Can you enlighten us? Hello?
Um, I will have to follow up with you on whether they are rolled over or if we just have them apply. We have a bunch of vacancies coming up, so we can make sure that they roll over if that's the case.
Let's, let's bring that up again when we have the formal discussion on next meeting. All right, thank you, everyone. That concludes the administrative and the appointments. Let's move on to consent agenda. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? Let's begin with Commissioner Kelly.
I would like to pull 6D, please.
And so would I. Perfect. All right. Anything else from my colleagues? Commissioner Turkin, anything from you? Vice Mayor?
Aye.
6D as well. Everybody's on 6D. All right, may I have a motion to approve the remainder of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And there's a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz, second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. I'm going to ask if we could have staff approach the podium. I believe this would be Dr. Calcott. Would that be you? This is proposed resolution number R23-033, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a low-income household water assistance program. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Congratulations, Commissioner Kelly. This program is actually already ongoing. And Palm Beach County is already letting people apply to that. And many city of Boynton Beach residents, customers, utility customers have already gotten, taken advantage of this program. But what the county needs is a formalized agreement. They call it a vendor agreement. That's a requirement for the funds that have been provided to them. So they're working with all the municipalities to get a formal agreement in place. I will talk to our marketing staff and they had approached me. Maybe we'll advertise it a little bit more so people are aware of what the requirements are. But it's a county program being run right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Calcott while she's on the podium? All right, well, thank you so much. All right, may I have a motion to approve resolution number R23-033? We, I don't know who was first. Commissioner Kelly, I think you were the maker of the motion. All right, the second is from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, just for like a public service announcement, just wanted to let everybody know that this program is available through the county. It helps with utilities, including the FPNL and the water. If you are within, I think it's 60% of the state medium income, you're able to apply. And I would highly encourage people to call this phone number or send an email to this email. It's utilityassistancepbc.org. I know we have a lot of seniors that are living on fixed incomes and might need support with this or anybody within that income range. And then their phone number is 561-355-4792. If you know anybody who is either in the city of Boynton Beach or even outside within the Palm Beach County, let them know to apply. It's a really great program and it's there to support people in times of need. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you for sharing that information. I'm going to ask our city manager and city managers to make sure that that information is sufficiently publicized. We want to get that out there. Moving on to consent bids and purchases over $100,000. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? Let's begin with Commissioner Hay on my right. Nothing from you. Vice Mayor?
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Commissioner Turkin and Commissioner Kelly.
Oh, nothing. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, may I have a motion to approve the, let me just, I guess, to approve the consent bids and purchases over 100K?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly. A second from Vice Mayor Cruz. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to public hearing. And this is for the approval of the new site plan and new master plan for Mirror Floor. Counsel, I'm going to turn to you to begin the procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Commission. This hearing tonight is to approve the new site plan and new master plan for Mirror Floor Apartments to allow for the construction of multifamily residential development consisting of 58 residential apartments within five, two to three-story structures with associated residential improvements on 3.87 acres located on the west side of North Seacrest Boulevard, across from Mentone Road in the IPUD zoning district. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so I will swear everybody in at the conclusion of the brief explanation. The City Commission will hear from the applicant first, who will make their presentation, followed by the city staff. After city staff completes, you'll be able to hear testimony and statements from the members of the public who members of public can be sworn in if they choose to give sworn testimony. After the public hearing goes in reverse order, the city can respond to anything they've heard in the public. And finally, applicant goes last and can respond to anything they hear since they presented initially. You may ask any questions you have of any of the people who speak or give testimony this evening. And all the information in the Planning and Development Board record is, is part of the record here this evening as well. And anything staff reports, any presentations is part of the record. So at this time, I'd like to swear anybody in who intends to speak on this application and give testimony. Please raise your right hand and I'll swear you in. You swear from the statements or testimony you give this evening should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, it'd be appropriate to hear from the applicant.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Before the applicant begins, I just want to say to my colleagues, I want to request that we hold off all questions until after public comments. This way, we can hear from all parties involved, the public, the applicant, the city. All right, I see that Mr. Miller is at the podium. Good evening, and you may begin.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Bradley Miller with Urban Design Studio here representing the applicant. And Mr. Capelletti is here this evening. This is a property that, actually, I'm going to have Lauren Burnley from our office go through the presentation. But I wanted to give a, a quick intro. This is, I think, the third time that I've represented this property. And this is another one of those, I think I've talked to all of you about projects that have changed ownership, didn't realize that the site plan had expired, and then have to go back through the process. That's what we're doing. We, just for emphasis, we actually, the, the plan submitted still said Miller Land Planning on it. So you'll, you'll see that. So it was, we literally took the plans from the last approval and, and resubmitted. So with that, let me introduce you to Lauren Burnley, who's a great up and coming part of Urban Design Studio, and she'll go through the presentation. And we're all here for any questions.
Thank you, Bradley. For the record, Lauren Burnley with Urban Design Studio here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Mirror Floor, Palm Beach. I'm going to recycle a joke at the planning board. I said, you know, Brad really asked me to come up here. I was convinced it was because of everything that happened at Town Square. He just, you know, he didn't want to get back up here again. So thank you for the smiles. I appreciate that. So tonight, we're here to discuss Mirror Floor 58-unit apartment complex within your city. I don't have a clicker, so I think we're going to use this next slide method for whoever is controlling the presentation. Thank you. So the request in front of you tonight, while it is for a site and master plan, it is essentially a re-request of the site plan that was approved before. As Bradley mentioned, the site plan is still on the Miller Land Planning logo block. The request in front of you is actually just meeting today's code as well as meeting prior conditions of approval. So this site, let's go into it a little bit more. This site is located just south of High Luxo Boulevard, sandwiched in between I-95 and Seacrest Boulevard. To the north, you have the Palm Beach Memorial Park. And to the south, you have the Pine Point Villa condominiums. Next slide, please. The site is currently zoned infill plan unit development. This is a result of a previous rezoning request, which I'll go through in just a moment with you. This site also has a future land use designation of high-density residential, which allows up to 15 dwelling units per acre. Next slide, please. In 2007, this site was annexed in from unincorporated Palm Beach County into your city. This also accompanied, was accompanied by a medium-density residential future land use and medium-density residential zoning at that time. The site plan that was associated with that future land use and rezoning had 40 townhomes on it. They were not proposed as fee simple at that time. There were no lot lines that were configured yet. That site planned did subsequently expire. The site has remained vacant up until now. However, in 2020, there was another site plan approval that came through that Bradley also worked on. That site plan expired, but the future land use and the rezoning that accompanied that did not expire. So that future land use took it from a medium-density residential to a high-density residential. And the rezoning took it from a medium-density residential to the now infill planned unit development. The only part that expired was the site plan for the 58 units, which are the same 58 units in the same five buildings that we're proposing tonight. Next slide. This is really hard to see from here, so bear with me. This is just a colored site plan to show you where the landscaping is on the site, where we have the recreation, what the five buildings look like in comparison. Thank you for zooming in. This site is about 3.87 acres with the 58 units, brings us in just under 15 dwelling units an acre. We are proposing a mixture of two-bedroom, two-bathroom units and three-bedroom, two-bathroom units. I know we've seen a lot in your city as well as over Palm Beach County. There's a lot of studios and one-bedroom apartments being proposed. This is more typical for a family style. In conjunction with that, we are providing additional parking to make up for that because we do have additional two and three-bedroom units. And I believe the unit mix, we are providing more three bedrooms than two bathroom, than two-bedroom units. Next slide, please. Want to walk through how this site functions a little bit. Thank you for zooming out. You would access off of Seacrest Boulevard. There is only one access being proposed to the site. Due to the size, it's not necessary to have two separate ingress and egress points. When you come into the site, you come along that curve. Directly to your right would be the community office. We have two recreation areas that are proposed very central to the site with equal access to all five buildings. Parking is conveniently located for all five buildings proposed on site. And there is continuous pedestrian access, benches and bike, bike racks throughout the site as well. We are also proposing a perimeter buffer around the entire site with a fence. And we'll go through that in a little bit more detail, what that looks like, especially on that southern portion. You can see here, if, if you look on the east side as well as the west side, we are proposing dry detention areas. That is to provide additional buffers on the east as well as the west. East on Seacrest, west on I-95. Next slide, please. This is the landscape plan. I'm not going to go through too much detail on this. It's not meant to be confusing. But what I do want to focus on with this is the amount of trees that we are providing on this site. The previous developer, as well as the current developer, has committed, we are providing over 50% of the required trees on site. We, because of that, we're able to succeed, exceed our sustainability requirements for what the city requires. So that's the reason this is up here, so we can really understand that those western portions and the eastern portions that I talk about, buffering the site are absolutely filled with trees as well as the perimeter buffer that's being required. Next slide. This is that perimeter buffer on the southern portion next to Pine Point Villas. The entire southern property line will look like this. The existing buffer has the FPL power poles, which is shown all the way on the left side of the screen. There's also an existing hedge on the Pine Point Villa property side. We are also providing a new fence, trees, hedges and grasses along that entire property line to further buffer any viewshed there would be from Pine Point Villas into Mirror Floor and vice versa, from Mirror Floor into Pine Point Villas. There's also an additional 35 to 60 feet of setback, depending on where you are on site, to the property line, which is much greater than what's existing at the Pine Point Villa site. Next slide. It's the same site plan we're looking at, just a little bit zoomed out to give context what Palm Beach Memorial Park looks like to the north and what Pine Point Villa condos looks like to the south. Seacrest to the east, I-95 to the west. Next slide. The architecture that we're proposing is a key west-style architecture, very consistent throughout your city as well as Palm Beach County. It's kind of this new typical that we're seeing proposed. The black and white one's a little bit boring, so we'll go to the next slide and we can look at the, the pretty color pictures. We are proposing two different building types. They're generally the same. The only reason they're different is depending on the unit mix that's within them. On the top of the screen is the blue color, I believe. It's kind of hard to see from here, but it looks like blue and that's the smaller style building. On the bottom is the green color, which is the larger building. There's also a yellow color that we'll see in the renderings in just a few minutes that has that similar pastel feel. Next slide. Now we're going to look at all the pretty pictures. These are the renderings that were done by the architect. This shows, that's the Seacrest Road in front of you. And that shows the main access to the site. You can see all five buildings, how it interacts with the Palm Beach Memorial Park to the north and Pine Point Villas to the south. Next. Little bit different view, this one more so shows what that buffer looks like between Mirror Floor and Pine Point Villas. It also shows how the recreation areas interact. It shows just the parking that's being provided for all five buildings. Next. Just a little bit zoomed out gives a bigger context for what Pine Point Villas looks like. Gives a good idea of scale between Pine Point Villas and Mirror Floor. You also have I-95 all the way in back, Seacrest on the bottom right corner of the screen. Next. Little bit different view here, gives more so the side of the Palm Beach Memorial Park to the north. The green area that you see there, that is mostly owned by Palm Beach Memorial Park due to the unique site configuration that we looked at at the beginning of the presentation. Next slide. I showed you all those aerial views that are kind of taken from a drone perspective. And those are good to get context for what the site looks like, how the parking works and everything. But ultimately, this is the difference that you're going to feel. Right now, the site is vacant. But if you're driving south on Seacrest Boulevard, this is how you would see this development. This is what Mirror Floor Apartments would look like. And this is consistent with the landscaping that's being proposed, the landscape plan I showed you earlier. And this is ultimately how this project is presented. Next slide. Staff does recommend approval of this petition. We also did receive unanimous recommendation of approval from the planning board on February 28th. That concludes my portion of the presentation. Bradley and I are both here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Meyer, Senior Planner with the Cities Planning and Zoning Division. We have nothing add, else to add. Pretty much everything was covered in Lauren's presentation. However, myself and Amanda Radigan are here for any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you, Andrew. I just walked back in. Did any of my colleagues want to hear the presentation? Was that a yes? Okay.
All right, again, my name is Andrew Meyer, Senior Planner with the Cities Planning and Zoning Division. Manny, next slide, please. All right, so the, the site previously had a site plan, master plan, rezoning and a future land use amendment back in 2020. Today, the future land use and rezoning designations, or the zoning designations remain. However, the site plan and master plan expired in 2021. The new site plan and new master plan is largely identical to the previous proposal. 58 units, five multifamily buildings containing 10 to 13 units each are being proposed as part of this project. Some of the changes, the Some of the changes, the slight minor changes, were actually included to address staff's conditions of approval from the prior application. So we kind of brought it a little bit more into conformity with our code. The current zoning is IPUD, and multifamily residential is permitted in the zoning district. The current future land use is high-density residential, which allows 15 dwelling units per acre, which results in the maximum of 58 units on the site, which is what they are providing. Manny, next slide, please. The request is for the new site plan and the new master plan. Again, the future land use and the rezoning were done in the past, and those remain, those don't expire. It's only the site plan and the master plan that had expired. Therefore, they are backed in for that approval. Manny, next slide. This is the proposed site plan. You'll note the location of the five multifamily buildings. They are oriented on the site to be set back as far as possible from the existing multifamily buildings to the south, so that, you know, they were done to reduce that effect to those properties to the south as much as possible. The ingress and egress is off of Seacrest Boulevard. And it's about, there are, there's two areas of open space, kind of towards the, towards the middle of the site. They kind of, the existing buildings, or the proposed buildings surround those proposed areas of open space. Next slide, please. The landscape plan was reviewed against our landscape code, and it does meet the landscape code with regard to buffers and vehicular screening. Manny, next slide. These are the proposed elevations for some of the buildings, specifically buildings four and five, the front and side elevations. Manny, next slide. And these are the rear elevations for those same buildings. Manny, next slide. And this is an example of the colors that'll be provided for the other buildings, the remainder of the buildings at the site. Manny, next slide. All right, so staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval, subject to the conditions of the company, or subject to approval of the the accompanying application, so obviously the master plan and the site plan together, and satisfying all comments indicated in Exhibit C, conditions of approval. So they are subject to the remainder of those conditions. Any additional conditions recommended by you tonight shall be documented accordingly in the conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna now turn to public comment on this item, after which we can go back to the city. As always, three minutes per person. After we've concluded with those in the room, we will proceed with those online.
Hi, Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. I was sitting on PND Board when this first came up years ago. At the time, we brought up that there needs to be open space if you're planning for families, where are the kids gonna play? And while I am the biggest tree hugger and lover in the city, I think putting the trees in the middle of the green spaces is probably the wrong choice, maybe on the perimeters or in clumps in corners, so parents still have visibility of their children. But we were told that there would be areas for soccer and/or basketball, and I'm not seeing that in this new plan. And that was, of course, a couple years ago, when it first came up. And of course, there was a lot of discussion at the time. I'm not sure if you're aware, Pine Point has a ton of residents. It's a massive project. And then, of course, you have the cemetery, and there's a lot of discussion at the time about what would happen, and if graves would be getting disturbed, which I'm sure they're not going to be. So that was not the biggest worry for us on the board at the time. I noticed that we're a couple years out now, and we still only have four electric car chargers, yet 25% of all cars will be electric in the next two years. This is not future thinking, this is not future growth-oriented, so they need to massively increase the amount of electric car chargers going in here. I believe there's also discussion at the time about not having enough handicap spaces. And looking at these pictures, I notice they don't appear to be white roofs. And I'm up here a couple times now, talking to you guys about white roofs and the need we have to make a drastic impact on sustainability with our city. And if you have not seen the UN reports coming out, they've been all over the news the last couple days. They're gonna scare the crap out of you. You really need to be thinking forward. You need to be thinking sustainability, and it starts with white roofs. And this is a simple fix. This is not hard. This does not cost them extra. It costs everybody less to go with a white roof. So let's make that simple little change happen. Let's add the electric car chargers. And I also noticed that this is now apartments. You all complain constantly about the lack of affordable housing. These would be perfect as owner-occupied townhomes or condos, which would help solve your affordable housing problem that all of you scream about. Everyone screams about it, yet no one's doing anything about it. You're exacerbating the problem by only building apartments and not townhomes and condos. They will still make money, they will just not make as many billions, which is why they don't present that to you. Don't believe them when they tell you they can't do it, and they won't make money, because the next one will. Please think about the future. And please give us some affordable housing, which is only gonna happen if you do owner-occupied apartment, or condos and townhomes. Stop making apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call for in-person public comments. Now is the time to approach the podium. Again, this is a last call for in-person public comments.
Hi, Ernest McNauley. I feel so bad, there's no audience. I love speaking in front of a big audience, but uh... So it's always, always about these projects, and always about the approvals, and always about the fact that, you know, you approved all these big projects at 2:00 in the morning, when none of the public was around. It just doesn't make sense. And like somebody like me would love to appeal all the three approvals, but I'm one, I don't know, I don't wanna call myself a nobody, but, but I'm one person. But if I could make an appeal of those three approvals, of those three projects, I think I could win, with the data and the information that I have. But you're always overpowered here. You come in, you're just like a citizen, you got nothing to say. Your money, your town is being, city is being taken away from us. You know, you make all these statements that teachers and police and city workers are gonna move into these buildings. Nobody for the city wants to live in Boynton Beach. At least, not that I know. And I even know people that supposedly work here that don't even really live here. So, you know, how, how... No matter what we try and say about these projects, you shut us down. We're not allowed to talk about it. You know? Already, federal and ocean is a nightmare. It floods, it's a DUI drug-vehicle homicide nightmare, right? And you're gonna add 2,300 more units. What's left of our city that's gonna be normal? What's left? And then every time I get up here, all I hear is, "Well, we approved that they gave $2 million to the art program, they gave a couple of million to the CRA, they got a few..." What has that got to do with taxpayers? What do we care that they give you $1 million for art programs? And then you approve it. Why is that fair? Why is any of this fair? And then you talk about electric charging. What are you talking about in this city, electric charging? You got half the cars in this city park illegally, every day. Every day. Right here at the smoke shop, they park all day long in a two-hour parking. All around the marina, they park illegally. They park on the grass, they park on the, on the anywhere. And then you keep approving this. Where are all these cars going? All these people? And most of this is tax-abated, and we're gonna have to pay for their services for all the times that the police have to go there for drug crimes, overdoses, drug dealing, prostitution. Did I leave anything out, officer? It's a crime scene around here. Is that my time up?
All right, are there any other in-person public comment speakers? Seeing none, IT, is there anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, we have one hand.
All right, and who is that person?
Miles Rich. Miles, you're unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please get the microphone next to your name.
Please state your name for the record, and I will let you know when you have 30 seconds approximately.
My name is Miles Rich.
Yes? Hello?
Yes, hello. You told me you were gonna let me know when my 30 minutes starts. My name is Miles Rich.
I will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining, so please continue.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir. I think this is a great project. I think Bradley Miller did a great job at urban design, and I look forward to seeing this project get built in the city. I think that the lady who discussed about electric car chargers, I think eight is plentiful amount of car chargers. That's considering it's a 58-unit project, which would be about 15% of the project with electric car chargers. And I think the project is great. The architectural element of the building, I think, should have the option to be changed and have more of an Anglo-Caribbean architectural style. But I think that shouldn't hold up the site plan, and council should ask the applicant if they are open to that, because I think that would really help the value of the project itself, and for the city as well, to make a good product. I think these buildings look like barnhouses. But the rest of the project's great. There's plenty of open space and plenty of parking. And I'm looking forward to seeing this project get developed. Thank you.
Thank you. And IT, was there anybody else? That was the final one?
Yes, sir, that was it.
All right, public comments on this item is now closed. I'm gonna turn now to the applicant, as well to city staff. If, you know, both parties might as well approach the podium, so the members of the commission can ask their questions. And also, let's begin now with the applicant, if you would like to, the city staff, if you would like to address any comments that have been made so far.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. There's no comments specifically, unless there's any you'd like for me to address.
All right, are there any questions or comments for my colleagues to city staff? Let's begin with Commissioner Hay.
I guess I'd like to ask a question, I think it's, I know the answer, but as you make the entrance off of Seacrest into this project, that little indention there, that belongs to Palm Beach Memorial Park, did you attempt to offer to buy that, sort of square it off? And maybe they won't sell, if you know what, the little indenture that I'm talking about? Okay, so potentially, you could end up with possibly grave sites in that area, and people looking out there wonder into grave sites, if they so desire to go that route, is that...
Actually, this is Bradley Miller from UDS for the applicant. The, it is an odd configuration for that north property line, and the reason being is there's, there's actually some grave sites in that little indentation already. So, obviously, couldn't be sold and squared off. It gives a reason for, for that configuration. The road coming in, just to give some explanation to that, is, has that S-curve in it, which was a, both city and county requests that it line up with the road across Seacrest. So it's a intersection situation there.
Thanks, Bradley. Also, there's only one entrance, one exit. Have you... Are the garbage trucks and other vehicles, fire engine trucks, they can turn around in that area? I don't see where they can make a circle to get back out.
They actually can. It's, staff's heard my joke, this joke way too many times, where we start with the location of the dumpster, and then we do the rest of the design around that, to be able to get to it. There's never a right place for it. But, but this one, if you look closely into the site plan, there's actually some dashed radial lines in there that are the, the turning movements for, we actually do it for the largest size of a fire truck. So if the fire truck can make it through, the garbage truck can make it through, they actually go, go and circulate through the, through the parking lot. The one entrance situation, actually, with, with I-95 to the west, we can't go that way. And having a secondary driveway there would be really too close for any traffic engineer to support, having two ways in or out. But your staff always does a great job of reviewing it for fire, for public works, for the circulation of the, both the trash trucks and the fire trucks, to be able to get around. And they hold my feet to the fire to make sure it's done.
Just one last question, Bradley and Andrew. Have you given consideration to playground equipment for kids? What was the position on that?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, because that was one of the reasons I wanted to address Ms. Oyer's comment. The two rec areas are identical in location and size as they were when she sat on the Planning and Development Board. At that time, we had, we did have a basketball court, and she asked us to remove it, because of concerns that it might actually attract people from outside of the neighborhood to come in and use a basketball court. So we did change that. And, and so one of there, there's two rec areas that are kind of positioned within the, right in the middle of the, surrounded by the buildings. One will be more of an open play field, like she was talking about, a soccer field. Will it be the standard size? Unlikely. But it's, when, when you're 10 years old, if you have two goals and some grass, you're, you're in good shape. And then the other one will be more of the, the family-oriented place. They'll have the totlot barbecue area that, you know, parents can sit there, let their kids play, cook up some burgers and hot dogs, and have, have a great time. So those are incorporated there. The, the trees that she was talking about are actually in, in the perimeters of the, the dry detention areas that are out to the sides. They're around the perimeter of that. There's a few tree species that are within there that are tolerant for water purposes. So it's, it's, it's well-designed.
Great, I, I really, I'm glad you would, to hear that. But you can let her know, I really don't see that as a problem of outsiders coming in, because we have enough recreational facilities in the city of Boynton that is adequate for, for playing basketball, or whatever they want to play. But your response there...
I think you just did. Thank you.
Yeah, good, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hay. Let's turn to Vice Mayor Cruz. Anything for the city staff or the applicant?
I think you pretty much covered it, just same question about the playgrounds. And the only question is, why green? Is there a specific reason why one of the buildings is green, like a lime green?
I think the palette was more of a, what's the Floridian type of pastelly, light blue, light green, light yellow.
As long as the neighborhood around it is fine with it. I have no problem.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. For myself, Bradley, I have two concerns. The playground's already been addressed. Could we talk about that landscape buffer between Pine Point and this proposed project? I want to make sure that, you know, the people at Pine Point, they have their privacy. And I don't want the cars, and when they park with their lights on, are not gonna be glaring into someone's window. Tell me more about that landscaping buffer, because depending on which picture I'm looking at, it's not superbly clear to me what, what that is.
Right. I'm not gonna get into the species, because honestly, I don't know what they are. But there's layers of hedges. Sid, the, the first is what, what Pine Point already has on their property, on their side of the line, which is pretty substantial. There's actually, one of the slides shows that, of the detail. Maybe if it could go to, I don't know the number, but it's the, it shows the detail of the buffer.
Are there two layers? Did I see that correctly?
And then on our side, we have, we also have a layer along that, along that side. And then there's, so that covers, so their hedge is, I'm gonna say approximately 5, 6 feet high. We have a lower hedge that covers that area at the bottom of their hedge that, that sometimes gets a little weak with the vegetation, so it covers that up. Then we have a layer of trees, of canopy trees, that are along there as well, that cover above their 6 feet in height. We have to, we had to design the, the tree species there, because there are overhead power lines. power lines there, so they can't grow up into those. But there's tree species that FPNL allows in those situations, which is what's been specked out here. And, and the purpose of that layering is to not have the, the vehicular light shining.
Thank you. That was my concern. Nobody wants that into their bedroom window. My other question for now has to do with the cemetery. I just want to make sure that whoever the construction team is, that they're committed to making sure that, you know, they're not disrupting those grave sites. We can't have the vehicles near there. We can't, and so on, so...
One of our conditions of approval, and, and the applicant, who's also the, the GC here on the, on the project, the contract. So it's known, but there is a specific condition of having a continuous dialogue and, and relationship with the owners of the, of the cemetery to the north.
All right.
Obviously, a very sensitive issue, you know, with, with services going on, et cetera. So it needs to be coordinated.
Absolutely. All right. You've addressed my concerns for now. Let's turn to Commissioner Turkin. Questions for city staff or the applicant?
Is there, is there a traffic study for this? Or is that just a condition of approval? Getting that back?
There is a traffic study that is provided.
What grade?
The grade?
Yeah.
I don't recall what the grade was. I know we didn't have any issues. The, the only comment that I think came out of it was, which we, we addressed that even our last time, and addressed it again this time, of, of working on a crossing of Seacrest Boulevard at that location, and it wasn't warranted to put in a special kind of crossing there, which corresponds to lower levels of, of, actually, higher level of service, I should say.
Sure. And these are market rate? These will be market rate?
They're, yeah, I'll answer it this way. They're, they're, you know, the, the whole multifamily, single-family thing comes into play, and it gets difficult. If, if the economy and the market were in a situation right now where condos, it'd probably be a condo situation. It's just how, how they're built. And I, I would, I would say that they're gonna have to be in, in a market rate. However, that market rate, as you all know, the highest rates of the workforce housing are sometimes a lot higher than all of us are, are in units now. So I think it's gonna be in probably those ranges of the upper-level workforce housing rates once we get there. But this, this project did not require participating in the workforce housing and have that legal attachment to it.
Sure, sure. No, I understand that. With, with the, you know, my, I, I think the project's good. I think my concerns are, you know, obviously, I'd like to see homeownership. We can't make you guys do that. You know, would, I would like, you know, the square footage for a three-two, eleven-hundred square feet. That's a, it's pretty on the, you know, pretty small. For a three-two, you know, I picture a family going in there, and eleven-hundred square feet is not a lot of room. Again, can't, you know, you're within code, but, you know, I just want to share that sentiment.
I think they could always take two and blow a wall out.
Say again?
They could always take two and blow a wall out.
That's right. You could decrease the amount and, you know, enhance the square footage. Yeah, it's, you know, my concern is, you know, we're seeing, we talk about market rate, right? We're seeing rates increase, and we're seeing square footage decrease. And so, you know, at, at one point, you know, everyone's gonna be living in a microunit. Yeah, it's, there's, there's other things we need to, you know, have a conversation about. I do like the landscaping. I think, you know, my colleagues touched on, you know, the, you know, our neighbors here, Pine Point, making sure that they're not disrupted, you know, cemetery. I don't, I don't have any other gripes, you know, besides, you know, besides what I've mentioned before. And I, I counted eight electric vehicle charging stations, not four. Correct?
There's, there's four, what do you call them? Four equipment stations that serve two cars each.
Okay, so there's eight. Okay, so that's good to hear. No, I think we're, we're good to go. Those, those are all the comments that I have at this point in time.
All right.
Just on the EV car thing, something that I, I'm now recommending to most of my clients doing projects like this or residential, is put the conduit in now and have them there. We, we all know where it's going. And then as, as that goes along, lines can be easily pulled and added in. So my client just heard that for the first time, too.
And, and just so I understand, this has already been approved? And, and this was just expired, right? We're just coming for another in addition?
It's, it's, other than what, what Andrew explained, that there were some conditions of approval, that we said, while we're doing this, let's just fix it now, from the old one. So it's literally the set of plans are, I didn't even change the date on them to, to make the emphasis of, of, they're the same set.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Turkin. I'm gonna turn now to Commissioner Kelly.
I just have a few things, just kind of piggybacking on my colleagues. So on the, on the edge of the cemetery line, you know, Commissioner Hay brought up a good point. You know, these, the apartment, you know, residents will be overlooking a cemetery. Are you anticipating that there will be a hedge that will eventually, could eventually block the view of potentially those apartments or trees or vegetation? I know, I saw that there was gonna be a fence, so that would protect, you know, people from going into the cemetery. But what, I guess that's my, one of my thoughts is, how are, how are you gonna buffer the cemetery so that, you know, those apartments are not just overlooking a cemetery?
Understood. And, and there is a buffer there that has both hedges and, I, I don't, I think we have palms there. Reason for the palms is less fruitball to grow into the cemetery. Story again, going back to the last time, the cemetery called me last time, and they were asking about a wall. But then we got talking about it more, wall needs a footer. Footer reaches out, and so they quickly said, yes. So there's, there's an aluminum rail fence along that north boundary. There is hedge material, and there's trees with some growth. Will that hedge grow to, to screen the entire building? No. But they, they have buildings on their site as well. They have I-95, which is probably noisier than anything around. So it's, it's, originally, the property was, was obviously part of the cemetery. They sold it off to my initial client, probably ten, twelve years ago now. And they, so they subdivided it off. Interestingly, they, one thing that they didn't do was, because they're in the county, they didn't change their buffer on their south property line. So it was one of those, those discussions with them of asking for more until I said, well, you haven't, you haven't fixed your problem. You know, which way do you want to go here? So they were quickly agreeable to the fence and, and trees and, and hedges.
My other ques, so, and I, so Ms. O'Yar brought up the need for an open space, and I, I think the reason that we got to that point was, in one of the presentations that we were looking at, one of the open spaces has a playground, and the other open space has a pavilion. And so I think that, but then in the actual plan, it, it appears that most of that stuff is on one of the open space, and then one, the other open space is truly open. So I think there's just, it's not, in the pretty picture, the pretty picture shows that both, there's no true open space. But in the plan, it shows that one is all open green space. So, so just, can you clarify?
Certainly can, and very astute of, of both of you. The, these renderings go back to the prior approval, too, that were, that were used in the Presentation of Planning and Development Board, the commission at the time. And then the, the outcome of that was, changed those. We didn't update the renderings. But on the official plans, it's, one is, I believe it's, easternmost is an open playfield. And then the, the western rec area is, is more of the, as the barbecue area and the totlot setting.
Perfect. Yeah, that's what it looked like on the plans, but then there was the, the pretty pictures that makes it...
Thank you.
Like, it's not that way. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then my only other question, you mentioned it, so I'm gonna bring it up or ask you further about it. When you, you're saying that now you're recommending to your clients that they drop in the electric conduits for electric car stations? And are you adding more areas for, is, or is that what you're suggesting? Is that you're suggesting that, I know that there's eight, and that's great. But I'm wondering, are you suggesting on properties going forward that there's more opportunity to add more in the future? Or is this really gonna be how many are there? I guess it's my question.
Well, this will initially be what's, what's there. What the conduit will do, PVC pipe, if you will, laid in the ground, put in at the same time that the electric is put in to serve the ones that we're gonna initially install. As electric vehicles become more popular and there's more need, they can just run that electrical, the electrical lines into that conduit, pop it back up out of the ground, and add another station as, as we progress.
So that will be part of this plan?
I, well, he heard it for the first time with me, with, with my back to him. But the, the conduit is, is not that, really that, that big of a deal to put it in. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn here. And, and I think it makes for smart planning. We, we can, we could really, you know, just stretch it out to both sides, and that would allow the opportunity to put in two, two more charging stations to serve eight more cars again.
Okay.
In each spot. So I, I don't, I don't think they're gonna, they're not gonna reduce the number.
Right. No, I got it. Thank you. That's all. I just wanted some clarity on those few things. So thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. We have now heard from the applicant. We've heard from staff. We've heard from the public. I want to do one final run-through. Any follow-up questions or comments? Commissioner Hay?
I do have a, another observation, a question, if you will, Bradley. I think on the south side of your project, there is really gonna be two hedges, right? Yours and, and theirs. What's the footage? How many feet between those two hedges, roughly?
Their, their hedge is, I'm gonna guess, maybe two or three feet off of their property line. And then ours would be about the same, which is pretty routine to do it with that spacing. So as it grows, you, you basically had that line going up between them.
There's gonna be about six feet between the two hedges, probably, roughly.
Yeah, probably less than that.
The concern that I'm, what I'm thinking about, are we, are you creating a self-imposed space for vagrants to do acts that are not acceptable?
A good thought. I think that, well, I think even if they were, that, the, the way the spacing is, is where it, where it drops into the ground. That's how I was looking at it. The hedges then grow together, so I think it's gonna be a very, very narrow spot. Ideally, they really end up touching each other.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
That's it.
Thank you.
I actually thought what you were gonna say was you wanted the Millerland planning logo to come back.
I'll, I'll circle back to Vice Mayor Cruz when she returns. Commissioner Turkin, do you have any follow-up questions or comments? Commissioner Kelly?
No, thank you.
And none for myself. So if there's nothing else from my colleagues, I will entertain a motion first, and I know it's not an ordinance, but city clerk, would you like a roll call vote? Okay. May I have that motion to approve item 8A with all of the conditions of approval as attached?
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Kelly. City clerk, if you could please begin the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly? Yes. Commissioner Turkin? Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Mayor Pensilvania?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cruz is not here, so motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now moving on to unfinished business. 10A, continued discussion on adding a sister city in Ukraine. Staff has informed me that we're waiting on someone?
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner?
Can we table this item?
Absolutely.
The presenter wasn't available this evening, and will be available in April. I think Catherine has confirmed that availability. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. I'd like to table that item.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second? And there is a second. All those in favor of tabling this item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to 11A. This is new business, approve the use of ARPA funds and the amount of $775,000 to pay for capital items needed to outfit the auditorium in the Arts and Cultural Center and to purchase equipment and furniture for the women's club. I'm gonna have staff introduce this item, and we do have a beautiful rendering up on the screen. Thank you for that. City manager, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Back when the town square project was actually in the conceptual phase, the plan was to actually, when we redeveloped the Arts and Cultural Center along with the Schoolhouse Museum, build all the, the public portions of the town square, it was always a plan to have a viable audiovisual system put into the, the auditorium or the gymnasium of the old high school, which is now our Arts and Cultural Center. The, the primary reason for this is, in the city, most cities have convention centers. They have a venue where they can actually hold events. They can do state-of-the-city addresses, things of that nature. In our city, essentially, what that has is, we have to go and we have to find a vendor, a private vendor, and specifically, a perfect example would be Bimvenudos. So we pay that vendor to not only do the catering of the, the venue, but also for their, their, the space that we're renting. So what this would do is, it's twofold. Essentially, the upfront cost is 775,000. I want to say 80K of that goes to the furniture for the women's club, and also some refrigeration and some other items, which is another venue that we also derive revenue from as a city. So this isn't, this is more of an investment versus us just the normal expenditure. So what we're gonna do is, we're actually gonna use this as a rental venue as well once it's outfitted. But in its current state, it's not a viable venue, so there is no, there's no way we can actually derive revenue from that space. As you can see on the, on the projection or on the, the rendering, there's two projection screens that I'm going to make sure are retractable, so we can actually retract those in the event that we need to move them up for whatever purpose. That screen in the back is a complete digital screen, much like you see at the Kravis Center or you would see on a television station. Those of you who've had interviews, we could change that screen to whatever it is. That's, it's gonna be a common theme if you're gonna do a state-of-the-city. It would have the city's logo, something like that. But moving forward, I, I think that the investment portion of this is gonna pay for itself over the course of five to 10 years. So we're just gonna have to obviously set a, a rate, a rental rate, for third parties and things of that nature. But it's, it's a needed item in the city, so...
All right. Thank you, city manager. Let's begin with Commissioner Kelly. Questions or comments on this proposed expenditure?
I don't really have any questions. This is something that I have discussed with the city manager and city staff, and I support this. I think that, you know, outfitting that in a way that, you know, schools can use it, we can use it, it can be rented as a true, you know, theater setting with, you know, the soundboards and equipment and everything, I think is, is a must. It's a beautiful building, and it's not being utilized to its fullest. So I'm happy with that, and I'm, I'm glad we're doing some updates at the women's club, because I, that's a, that's a revenue stream for us, and we need to upkeep that. So I'm happy, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Turkin?
So we're, we're not currently renting this out? You mentioned that we, we haven't established a rental rate?
We, we do rent it out.
No, we, yeah, we do rent it out. But it's not, I don't know what the exact cost is.
It varies depending on what rooms the renters request. So there's like fifteen rooms in that space, and depending on what you rent. So it's not, there's no flat fee. There's also a nonprofit rate, a resident rate, and a non-resident rate. But the biggest feedback we get from the people that rent the space is the acoustics in there are terrible. They wish we had a speaker system in there. The windows are beautiful and let in the wonderful light, but then it makes it impossible to see what's happening on the stage because the lighting is too much.
The original plan and foresight for that specific space was to have an audio visual system in there. However, I'm not sure what happened. There's a lot of things that went wrong with town square. This being one of them. So this is another chance for us to try to, uh, I guess, right that wrong in the past.
So it would, um, it would be safe to say we can increase these rental rates by adding this feature in, correct?
If those renderings that I'm looking at turn out to be accurate, absolutely.
You know, because, you know, we, we talk about investment and I, we've invested a lot of money into, uh, you know, this whole project as it is. And so I think, you know, taking the lens of how can we turn this into an asset, right? I think is important. So, you know, I, I support it as long as, you know, we're moving forward as, as utilizing this as an app set and as an asset and as a tool that the community can use. I'm, I'm happy to hear that. There's resident discounts and nonprofit discounts. And, um, no, we got to be the best. So we got to have the best stuff and, uh, you know, get that premium rate.
Point first. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Turkin. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yep. I already had a conversation with the city manager earlier about this. Um, I was looking at the numbers, not going to lie. But as previously stated, it does look like it's something that will benefit the city long term. It's going to bring more opportunity for us to rent that room and for us to create a revenue source in the future. I did want to ask a couple of questions. Number one, how many quotes did we get from this?
So this is going to be bid out, this whole project. So we don't have a vendor selected. This is just our estimates based on looking at pricing. So we will be bidding this out formally.
Okay. Um, all right. Just thinking that, how can we come to a price if we haven't really gotten quotes per se? Okay. And then that would be important. And then making sure that maybe we can support local businesses if we can get a void business if it's available and if it's reasonably priced. Um, I think that would be important, too. One other thing is for the blinds, it looks like it's about $30,000 worth of blinds that I was looking at. Would it be possible to maybe, and maybe this is a stupid thought or, or maybe not a good thought, or maybe it is, I don't know. But maybe have we considered tinting the windows, kind of like how people do it in cars instead of spending $30,000 in blinds? Have we considered tinting the windows where the sunlight would be somewhat in the room, but maybe not?
Yeah, we can definitely look at that. One of the reasons to add curtains to the walls is that, um, it helps with the acoustics. Anything that fabrics that you can add to that room. So the stage curtain will help with the acoustics, adding window dressings, that will help too. But we can look at what our best options are, certainly.
Just, just wondering. I'm not.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Hay?
Uh, yes, I've, I agree with the comments that have been made. I just wanted to say that I think it's money well spent. I, I feel that our arts and, and cultural center is getting very popular and among the public. And many people have, they talk to me how nice it is. And, um, I, I think eventually, uh, it will pay for itself. I say that because that's an inside joke with my wife and I, but, uh, it will pay for itself. And, um, I, I just feel that if we make it even nicer than it is now, we're going to, there's going to be a waiting line. Because it's unique spaces there. Uh, you can arrange the chairs and you got this, uh, the stage in both places. Uh, I, I just think we, uh, we're on the move. I just would like to put this out to staff and not now, but I would like to know where we stand with the ARPA funding, uh, the, the, how much we got left, what are we spending on? Where are we going? You know, not now. You don't have to answer now.
We have 2.6 million left if the expenditure goes through. Yes, sir.
All right. You want to, you want to talk a little more on that now or a little later on?
I can have Mara, our finance director, come forward.
Oh, she's ready.
I see you skipping to the podium. You mentioned money. She gets excited.
Good evening, Mara Fredrickson, Director of Financial Services. So of the 13.6 million of the ARPA funds, we have actually 5.3 million available. After this expenditure, we would have four and a half million available still. Based on everything you guys have approved at this point. We do anticipate using about 2 million towards revenue losses in the budget. So he's correct in that 2 million being left after that. But that's still up for approval through the budget process.
Those, those funding that's left are not earmarked for any particular.
They are not, no.
It's up to us to.
That's, that's correct, Commissioner Hay. And as you may recall, I have an agenda item coming up to discuss ARP funds. And if you all recall, I said, we first need to hear the infrastructure update from staff with their priorities. How can we know how to divvy up the rest of those funds if we don't hear their official priority list? So that's coming up, I was told.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara.
I have a question about the.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Does the call, and excuse me if I don't know the answer to this, but does the cultural center have a kitchen area where maybe food can be warmed up or cooked or whatever? When I think about like the Kravis Center or convention centers, when they do like luncheons and that sort of thing, I think as we're talking about making this an opportunity for potential revenue sources in the future, do we have a kitchen area where we have refrigeration or maybe ovens to keep things warm or?
Yes, there's a full catering kitchen.
Okay. Amazing. Thank you.
I have the last, I don't know if I could.
Let's go to Commissioner Kelly first and we'll circle back.
Okay.
And I still haven't said my comments yet. But go ahead. Commissioner Kelly?
I'll be quick. I just have, I, you know, we're talking about the arts and cultural center and I'm just wondering, does the, does any of the arts fund, can any of the arts fund be used for, I mean, if there's anything that is prime for using the arts fund and whatever we're collecting from projects or whatever is in the art fund would be enhancing our arts and cultural center? Is that something where maybe not, maybe we won't use all of the funds, but maybe we can share in that expense because, uh, because, I mean, our arts department is, will benefit from these updates?
Yeah. So there's pretty strict requirements for what the art fund is allowed to, what we're allowed to spend money on. Typically, 30% goes to administration and 70% goes to procuring actual art for the city. But I can confirm that. I'm about 90% sure. So I can confirm that.
Okay. Thank you. I, yes, I would like to know that if we can pull some of those funds from somewhere else, that would be great.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Was that it? All right, Commissioner Hay, you had a follow up?
No, I would, I, I was approached, uh, by someone, uh, talking about space for, uh, what do they call that? Ballroom dancing or something. And, uh, and they were asking about the, the center. I, and I, I was going to get with the, with the city manager and talk about that, but do we do any public, um, I should I put this, uh, i- if it's done, i- is it always a fee involved in, in, uh, doing activities at the arts and cultural center? Or, or do we donate some time?
It de- it depends on what it is. For example, the Magic Wheels and Special Deals was hosted there and that was an event that was free and open to the public. Events where we have to pay to bring an entertainer in, or if it's a conference that somebody's using privately, then we certainly would charge.
So Catherine, would you be the contact person if I can just?
Yeah, I'd love to have a conversation.
Thank you. That's it, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. I think that's a great, um, great thing that you brought up because we do need eventually to have a, a discussion in this commission. Uh, what our policy is for, you know, these types of arrangements. We want to make sure we're being fair and consistent with how we, um, process these requests. So, no, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, as for me, you know, I support this. Uh, there's no question that this needs to be done, obviously. Uh, I wish it had already been done. I wish the naming rights campaign had worked out better. Uh, the naming rights campaign was the original plan to fund, uh, these, uh, these additional items. It is what it is. Um, when I looked at the women's club items, and I mentioned this to staff, there was no items there for any of the audio visual equipment. And I did ask staff, I just want to share that with my colleagues, to please look into that. My concern is we may not need it today. But we, we might need it in the future. And if that's the case, we might as well just take care of it now, not let it pass on to the next commission. Let's just handle it all at once. Uh, but I did ask staff to go ahead and please, uh, bring us back what kind of information they can come up with. All right. Um, that's it for me. And thank you, everyone. Vice Mayor? Go ahead. I mean.
Just want to ask a, a question. I don't know who would have the answer, but how did the art fee get determined? Like what policymaking body made the determination of what percentages? Like it was a commission? So is that something that we could bring into a future agenda to potentially maybe fund some of this? Because when we, when I think of, I don't want to get into a whole discussion, but is that something that maybe we could do to support this and maybe, um, the women's center? Because, I mean, it's, it's financial assets that we have. And if we have, if it's the purview of the commission and it appears that people might be in favor of that, then it might be something we want to look into in the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I will certainly look into that. That's not a bad idea. So let me look up that ordinance myself now, because now you guys have got me curious. All right. Was there anything else on this item? Because we do need public comments before we entertain a motion. If you would like to speak specifically on this item, this is item 11A, please approach the podium now. After the in-person comments, we'll go online. All right. Your comments have to be germane to the item. And please state your name for the record, begin when you're ready.
What does germane mean?
Relevant.
Oh, I like, I didn't know that.
You asked, sir.
Oh, okay. I figured you're the best teacher in the county, right? Ernest Mignoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. Yeah, it is funny. You're darn right. It's funny. So this cultural center, you know, I go to all the events. And I just went to like the, the one with the bench. And, you know, when I got there, you know, it's all seems to be related to the art center and the building, et cetera. Everything's kind of related. So I went to the thing with the bench and I thought, that thing looks like it's edible, like a piece of cake or something. And when I got there, they told me it's not eatable, it's edible. So I said, that's kind of a complex term, if you know what I mean. So any psychiatrists out here, they'd get the joke. So, uh, this cultural center, I, I, I can't believe all these funds that are going for stuff with people starving in Boynton Beach. I, I can't make this out. You, you're talking about expensive decorations, expensive bands, expensive music, expensive paint, expensive curtains, expensive this. And there's students and people in Boynton Beach getting up in the morning that don't have food. And every time we hear a big project get approved, they say, oh, here's a million for the art program. And then we'll take the, the presidential money for COVID, we'll use some of that money. That's, that's not what this meant for. What, in times like this, when people have trouble with their homes, with income, with food and safety, and you're dumping money into these silly projects, one right after the next. I mean, how come there's no accountability? Every time we ask, we can't get an answer. People have come in here and asked 100 times, where's this money come from? Who approved this? Who approved that? And the answer is always, oh, we'll get back to you next week. Uh, oh, you just have to call the city manager. You get all, we can't get anything. There's too much money going into art and cultural in this city. It, first of all, all the events that are here, in my opinion, are a liability. Very few people come. The only time they come is when you serve alcohol and, and there's marijuana being smoked. If you don't have alcohol and marijuana, nobody comes to these events. And if you think, what's so funny? What? You, you should know about the drinking. Hello? Yeah, I know. Mr. Redface over there.
All right. Your time has expired. Take your seat, sir. All right. Next public comment speaker, please approach the podium. Please state your name for the record and begin when you're ready, sir. One second.
Junior, uh, 1086 Southwest 28th, or 25th Place in Gulfy Harbor. It's first I've seen this, but it seems to me that you're also going to be building a hotel right next to here, right? If the hotel doesn't already have a convention center, maybe you can work with the hotel and maybe get the hotel to pay for some of this stuff and maybe give them a reduced rate on renting it and make it almost like this is their ballroom. You know, just let them both use each other. Because what does a hotel love? They love to have a place for people to have vents and then for people to stay there. So just, uh, just a thought to try and defer some of the costs that maybe you could get them to help or work with them to make it just more viable for everybody.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other in-person public comment speakers, we're going to go to online. IT, do we have anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. May, we have no hands raised.
All right. Public comments on this item are now closed. If there's no final comments or questions from my colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 11A.
I'm moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly and I heard a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now moving on to item 11B, Proposed Resolution Number R23 dash 035, Approve and Adopt the Recreation and Parks Department System Master Plan. Uh, we do have our consultant here. So they're approaching the podium. Let's begin with them and then we'll entertain any questions from the call, my colleagues. Or Mr. Young, you're already here?
I'm here. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. First, let me start off by saying congratulations to Commissioner Kelly on your, pointing back to your seat. My name is Casey Young. I'm the Recreation and Parks Director. Uh, I'm here tonight and thank you for this opportunity to bring forth to you the, uh, final draft of the Park System Master Plan. For, uh, bringing this plan forth to the commission, uh, for adoption, uh, and approval. This has been a long process that we've been through, uh, for the department to bring this plan together. Tonight, I have Consultants 2GHO and Perez Planning and Design. George Chantel from 2GHO is here tonight, along with Carlos Perez from Perez and Perez Planning and Design, who will provide a presentation, uh, of the overview of the Park System Master Plan. Uh, so at this time, I'll turn it over to Carlos.
Thank you, Casey. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Excited to be here this evening. Uh, my name is Carlos Perez with Perez Planning and Design. Been working very closely with your staff, residents, and even you throughout this process to share this final plan with you. Just want to say that I really enjoyed hearing your opening remarks and even some of the proclamations this afternoon and seeing how Parks and Recreation were part of some of those. Uh, so it speaks to how Parks and Recreation, you're integrating that already into your community. Like many communities we work with and recognizing it that it's not just a nice to have infrastructure, it's critical infrastructure for residents. So we're excited to share, uh, an overview of this plan with you this evening. We've been able to share this with some of you and with staff and, uh, members from the community. We've received some comments already and have updated the plan accordingly. And we'll touch on some of those. And if you have any questions, we look forward to answering those as well. So we'll start with, uh, the next slide that speaks to our agenda for you this evening. We're going to give you, just provide you a brief overview of the process that we went through. Then we're going to briefly touch on the needs assessment summary findings, what we heard from your residents. Then talk a little bit about the vision, uh, implementation strategy, and then we'll wrap up with any questions that you might have. So we go to the next slide. It talks about the purpose of this plan, which was to assess the Parks and Recreation System comprehensively, identify needs in the community, based on those needs, develop recommendations. And a key part of that was meeting the CAPRA requirements for re-accreditation. The city has been re-accredited for some time, and this is a critical part of the process to ensure that that re-accreditation happens. The next slide talks about the process that we went through, our approach for this project, which was five steps, each one building on itself. Starting with context analysis, which develops a strong foundation of the plan based on projects that were previously completed and previously completed plans. And Phase Two builds on that and goes out to the community using a variety of different techniques to identify needs and priorities. Phases one and two then allows to lead to Phase Three, developing a long range vision. Uh, Phase Four then, uh, develops an implementation strategy based on what we heard from residents or needs and priorities. And finally, we're at. And finally, we're at uh phase five now, which is the plan uh and adoption. The needs assessment process is a really important part of this process and there isn't just one technique that we use. We use a variety of techniques, a triangulated approach, qualitative, what we hear, observational, what we see, and quantitative, what we can count. And it's where the findings of all those three intersect or overlap is what starts suggesting what the needs and priorities are. So what you can see on this image here is the different techniques that we use from a qualitative perspective, interviews with you. We had a steering committee that met throughout this process and we met with them uh recently and got comments from them and updated the report accordingly. We also had in-person and virtual community meetings. Uh we had various focus group interviews, online survey, project website. We also visited all your parks and evaluated them, also looked at demographics and uh of what we're going to look like potentially in the future. Um and and how that relates to recommendations and then also from a qualitative perspective, a statistically valid male survey and a lot of data crunching, looking at acres, facilities, amenities, quality level service, funding, et cetera. So the next slide speaks to uh just a summary of the highlights from the various public engagement uh techniques and and highlights from this process, which we're really pleased with. So what did we learn through this process? And that's what the next uh slide speaks to. Um is we're going to review just a brief summary of what we learned through this process. The first thing we want to look at is what we're going to, what we might look like, City of Boynton Beach might look like in the next ten years. So if we look at demographics when we project out just using linear regression, we see that we may grow by about three thousand people over the next ten years, which means there may be a need for additional amenities and facilities. Uh but uh cities' population is going to be adult and active adult. So we see that uh one and two and a half persons will be fifty-five and over, one and two and a half persons twenty to fifty-four. So what that means for us is anything we would do, we'd like it to be multipurpose, multi-generational, to address the variety of age groups in the in the community with an understanding that adult and active adult are going to be the majority of the population. The next slide speaks to uh race. We're going to be a very diverse community. So anything we do, we want to educate, celebrate, and strengthen diversity. Household incomes will vary, so we want to make sure that we're providing programs for various incomes. And then we want to be mindful of the social vulnerability in the city and how we can strengthen that in certain areas. So if we were to summarize what we learned into four words or concepts, it's these words here. Awareness, bring residents awareness of the facilities and programs that are being offered. Enhance what we have, uh connect residents not only to programs and services, but also physically to the system. And as we continue to grow, uh be mindful of that and expand accordingly. Other findings that we like to highlight are uh dealing with facility and amenities. Uh these are some of the high priority, or these are rather the high priority, uh Parks and Recreation Facility and Amenity Needs, as you can see there. Uh everything from be uh public beach access to natural areas and nature parks, community gardens, dock parks, restrooms in parks, unpaid walking and hiking trails and community parks. And you'll see how these elements are translated into the future vision and recommendations. From programs and amenities, community special events, adult fitness and wellness, nature programs, movies and parks, and senior classes. From an actions, uh uh increase safety and security measures in parks, develop a park app and that goes to the awareness and improvement strategy. And then developing walking and biking facilities. And lastly, areas of community concern, things that are not related to parks and recreation, but that there may be a strategy for parks and recreation to assist with, and that is community safety. We also asked residents how they would spend a hundred dollars in some of the exercises. So the next slide shows uh some of the highlights from that uh exercise. Give it a pause till we get that slide on the screen. There it is. So uh top was to improve maintenance and uh existing parks, developing new new uh walking and biking facilities or essentially connecting to parks, developing new additional parks and facilities in existing parks, acquiring new parkland and improving maintenance of existing bicycle and walking facilities. That was on how to spend dollars from a capital perspective. We go back to the previous slide. We also asked the same question from a programmatic perspective. And we learned that uh residents wanted to see funds going to improving the maintenance of parks, uh looking at additional adult recreation programming, not related to athletics, uh the additional senior recreation programs and not related to uh athletics. Uh additional youth programming, not related to athletics, but then also additional athletic programs and well and uh for youth in that order. So what does this mean from a vision standpoint? And that's what we're going to get into speaking now. Is the proposed vision, a long-range vision for this plan. This vision, as you'll see in the next slide, is comprised of a variety of elements. The mission, vision, values, guiding principles, policies, and actions, and the report speaks to those. And the implementation strategy, which we'll talk about in a little bit, speaks to these steps. So if we go to the next slide, we'll see what the mission and vision of the plan is, is to enhance the quality of life through recreational and cultural opportunities that promote a healthy, vibrant, and inclusive community. In terms of vision, to create exceptional and equitable recreation facilities and services that through continuous improvement exceed the needs of our residents while preserving our history and embracing our future. If you recall, we had four concepts that we identified as summary concepts for the needs and priorities. And what we did is we used those same concepts and translated those to the guiding principles that will inform the the plan. So that's grow awareness, uh enhance what we have, connect our recreation and park system, and then expand our our recreation and park system. So the next series of slides show you some policies under each of these guiding principles, and we'll begin with grow awareness. So idea is to develop a comprehensive marketing and branding strategy uh and look at intentionally and strategically telling our story in the community and making residents aware of what we're doing. As we're doing that, also explore partnerships to help achieve that. One way to tell our story is what we mentioned before and what was a private priority action from residents was developing a park app where residents can see what's happening, communicate with the city on what things can be improved, what things are doing wrong, and enhancing the overall communication and and awareness. If we go to the next slide, that speaks to enhancing what we have. We received a lot of really great recommendations from the community about enhancing parks and those are included uh within uh the report. And that goes from everything from including improving ecological restoration throughout the park system, uh looking at ways ways of managing and growing programs. The same way that capital improvements need to be improved, programs also need to be refreshed and renewed. So there's recommendations on how to how to do that and also looking at improve customer service. If we go to the next slide, it gets to our next guiding principle, which is connecting our recreation and park system. And you have a wonderful plan already in the complete streets plan. So uh we encourage that to continue to be implemented. I uh had an opportunity to moderate a webinar a few weeks ago with members from the Federal Highway Administration in Washington DC. And it was impressive to see the amount of federal funding that is currently available for trail and park projects. And part of that goes to this slide right here, implementing those projects, seeking those grants to implement those projects. Part of connecting uh the Parks and Recreation System is also enhancing mobility and transit connections to parks. And you'll see a specific example of that and an implementation strategy that we'll touch on in a moment. And then also explain the role of volunteers in the community, engaging them into the park system uh to help uh with stewardship of the different parks. As we're implementing these trails, if we go to the next slide, there's an opportunity to leverage that investment uh to, as you see in this image, taking a space that could look like this, right? Just a a trail corridor, but then we go to the next slide, seeing how spaces along that trail can include amenities and facilities that are residents have that identified as high priorities, whether it's community gardens, uh exercise equipment, playgrounds, uh et cetera. And if we go to our last guiding principle or next slide, it's about expanding the system. We know that we're going to grow over time, so we want the park system to grow accordingly uh with that. And part of that is looking at the west uh side of the city, west of I ninety-five. We heard a lot from the community and even interviews with some of you about the need of a community center out west and community parks out west. An idea that came through this process that we heard from your residents as well as from interviews with some of you and other staff is the idea of exploring uh in the future the potential for the Boynton Beach Mall site as a site for a community center or uh additional park facilities. And if you go to the next slide, this is very consistent with what other communities are doing. Uh this is one particular project that we were uh a part of where the community uh took this uh mall that was not in the in the greatest condition. And if you go to the next slide, they essentially turned it into a village, a village with affordable housing, with park space, community center space. Uh so there's a real opportunity that could be explored in the future to do something similar. And it doesn't even have to be this aggressive this quickly. It could be even speaking uh to uh landowners to see if any of the spaces currently within the center could, within the mall could be adaptively reused uh for any uh uh opportunities to provide programs and services within the community. In addition to that, uh expanding also looks at um expanding the opportunities for natural areas. That was something that was a high priority for residents, naturals and nature parks. Uh and one idea that also came out through this process, as you'll see in the next slide, is a a land along I ninety-five just south of Woolbright Road. Um and uh just north of Southwest Twenty-third Avenue, this image is facing south. So Woolbright is in the forefront. And we understand that this particular site has competing interests, but this was an idea that came out of the community, that idea of making that into an adventure nature park with mountain biking, hiking. Uh and then what's interesting about this site too is its potential connectivity to Forest Hill Park, which uh we own FPL Park Site, which we own Girl Scout Park, uh which we own, and also Colusa Park, which the county owns. So there's an opportunity to create uh a connectivity from a natural area perspective uh in that part of the city. The next slide shows uh recommendations, just a summary of recommendations of all the various facilities that are recommended uh throughout the city based on what we heard from residents as well as benchmarks uh in the community uh or benchmarks from comparable communities. Uh and that ranges from a variety of amenities, whether it's community parks, neighborhood parks, skate parks, dock parks, rectangle fields, splash pads, pickleball courts, uh et cetera. And then we go to the next slide, you really talks about integrating public art. You have a beautiful portfolio of public art in the city and there's an opportunity to continue to push that and make that a uh continued unique aspect of the city, whether it's incorporating public art into courts, uh into playgrounds, into buildings, and even out uh within the natural setting. But as we're continuing in the expand vision, uh a guiding principle, we also, as we expand the system, we need to be mindful of uh sta staffing requirements, hiring the needed positions. And then as we're hiring those positions, making sure that they reflect the diversity of of the community. And then a key part of the implementation of this plan is pursuing funding. And we're going to talk a little bit about that in the implementation strategy where we've provided a variety of funding options to be considered in the future uh as this plan is implemented. And then the last uh slide associated with expand uh guiding principle is looking for the intersectionality of where these improvements can also address the things that we heard from residents are a concern. So for example, community safety. How can these park improvements help improve the community's safety, not only in parks, but throughout the community? And even affordable housing. Uh you see an image there on the screen. This is work that we uh completed for District of Columbia and also the City of Atlanta of how this idea of a community center could also provide affordable housing as well. So just a concept to really explore that intersectionality and that also helps with funding sources as well. So all in all, that leads to the next slide that shows that integrated vision, a variety of improvements intended to uh enhance the quality of life uh in the city, but also bring awareness, enhancement, connect the city, and then expand it as it grows. Now we head into the implementation. So how are we going to implement this plan? And the implementation strategy talks about three key areas that will facilitate that. Begins with funding. We talk about capital projects and then staff actions. So we'll talk a little bit about the funding and some of the recommendations in the report. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the various types of funding sources that we talk about in the report. Uh everything from partnerships, whether it's the schools or even the Florida Department of Transportation or others to help not only achieve uh our goals, but see if there's a way for also help them achieve theirs. Also grants. Uh we included in the report a variety of grants. Uh not only did we include the grant types, but also the match amount, when their uh uh when their deadline is and what things they will cover. So staff has that uh ability to look at that and pursue it. We also talk about various dedicated funding sources. And we spent a little bit of time in the report talking about extraordinary funding sources. And that's what the next slide shows. The reason that we touched on this is that this continues to be a popular strategy for Florida cities to implement these types of projects. And that is extraordinary funding sources in the form of a general obligation bond. So what we did in the report is we laid out a variety of options to be considered in the future, no decision to be determined now, but a variety of options of how much taxpayers would pay and how much that would generate uh for a general obligation bond. And we also uh included very conservative targets of how these public dollars could be leveraged, which with additional funding to further that investment into the future. One of the key concepts that we um need to keep in mind is a lot of these grants require a match, whether it's twenty percent, fifty percent, even sometimes a hundred percent. So it's important to have those public dollars available to stretch those uh public dollars. So if we go to the next slide, then we talk about, well, if we have this money, right? How are we going to prioritize it? And how are we gonna, which are the right projects to spend first? So in the report, we talk about a two-phase strategy to identify those projects to implement. It starts with funding allocation targets and then it continues with prioritization criteria. What we mean by funding allocation targets is, as you'll see in the next slide, based on what we heard from residents of how they would like to spend money, we use those percentages to assign to these buckets, as we're calling them. So no matter if we have five million dollars, ten million dollars, twenty or a hundred million dollars, these uh targets inform where we spend those dollars, right? So forty-five percent could go to existing facility improvements, twenty-five to developing new facilities, sixteen new walking and biking facilities, fourteen to percent to acquiring parkland. So once we're in those buckets, then how do we prioritize projects? If you go to the next slide, it shows uh some of the guiding, uh some of the criteria that we used. And that's the next slide, the criteria that we use to prioritize projects based on these guiding principles that we talked about, right? The awareness, enhance, connect, expansion. So we worked with staff in creating this criteria. We then uh scored these projects and the next series of slides will highlight uh some of that prioritization. So if we go to the next slide, it identifies a priority, capital projects, improvements to existing facilities. The report has a complete list. This is just the top six that fit nicely on on the screen uh for you, for you to be able to see. Uh but that includes improving the Mangrove Extension Walk. Uh looking at improvements at Hester Community Center, expanding and improving the senior center and even reconstructing that that has reached a point that it needs to be improved. Um also uh looking at Harvey Oriar Junior Park improvements, there are some ideas there on how to improve that. Um if we go to the next slide, uh this is the development of new parks facilities. So that includes a Congress Middle School Community Park on the west side or west of I ninety-five, a community center also west of nine ninety-five, a community park in the northwest quadrant uh of uh the city. Uh looking at that FPL and I ninety-five Nature Adventure Park, the Leisureville Nature Park, and then the implementation of Eco Park as well. And then we go to the next slide. It talks about uh some of the priorities associated with acquiring land and that's land associated with a community center, the expansion of the senior center, uh community park out west, and various opportunities for natural areas uh throughout the city that is consistent with with what we heard from residents was a priority. And lastly, the report talks about staff actions. So it's actions that staff would have to take to uh to accomplish this plan over time. And again, those are organized around those guiding principles, which we uh call goals in this uh part of the report. So growing awareness, enhancing what we have, connecting and expanding. Uh it's four goals, twenty-three policies, and a hundred and forty-six steps with key performance indicators for staff to uh use uh to implement. And so just a few highlights uh on these slides to touch on. Awareness was a key goal, so we want to develop that strategic marketing strategy and intentionally uh tell our story and then look for those partnerships to help us just help us achieve that. If we go to the next slide, uh the goal associated with enhancing what we have. There are a lot of recommendations for capital improvement projects with planning level, order of magnitude cost. The idea would be doing feasibility studies and concept plans to refine those costs, right? And see uh what uh the true cost of those uh would be. Also managing and growing programs uh and uh making sure that that, those programs align with the demographic mix of our community. The next uh slide deals with some actions associated, we'll go three, connecting our Parks and Recreation System. So let's continue to enhance and implement uh the Complete Streets Plan. And also look at enhancing mobility and transportation, transit connections to parks. One of the highest priority needs that we heard was access to Oceanfront Park and enhanced access to Oceanfront Park. So there's a recommendation in this project to do a um uh a multimodal feasibility study for Oceanfront Park to explore a variety of things in more detail in coordination with the community and the adjacent city, whether it's finding efficiencies in parking, connecting trails to the park, using multimodal or trolley services. using multimodal or trolley services to expand access to the park in key times. So that's a really, really important part, a major recommendation coming out of this plan. And then the last slide deals with the last goal, the expanding our recreation and park system. And a real, an important part in this and as part of these staff actions is pursuing additional funding. The city has a grants rider. See if that grants rider may need a further assistance, whether it's a part-time hire, contract hire, or additional hire for park grants to pursue the funding that's available right now. There's the opportunities that we shared with staff identifies about forty-five million dollars worth of grants right now that are available. Granted, other cities are also competing for this money. But having those grants and having a grant rider to pursue them is a great opportunity. There's also a recommendation to complete a financial feasibility study associated with that extraordinary funding source, that general obligation bond. This would explore what the city can afford to borrow, what your constituents would be willing to pay. And they can even help you write the ballot, should you decide to do so. Write the ballot, take it to the ballot box and let your voters decide on what they'd like to do. And then lastly, advocating for the reissuance of the SRTAX. We know that that will sunset in a couple of years. In all our work that we do, sales tax continues to be one of the most powerful, sustainable funding sources for parks because it's a pay-as-you-go, so it's no debt. Residents aren't the only ones that pay into it. Visitors also pay into it. You've benefited greatly from this in the past. Many, the county has as well. So we encourage there to be advocacy around educating the community about the importance of that. Also speaking to your colleagues in the county about the importance of reissuing that and setting the groundwork for that to be explored and reissued in the future. So that concludes our presentation this evening. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share this presentation with you and to work with you and your staff on this project. And we'll look forward to any questions or discussion you might have. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation and thank you to Casey and everyone who was involved in making this happen. I'm going to turn now to my colleagues. Let's begin on my right, Commissioner Hay. Do you have any questions or comments for Carlos or Casey?
Very impressive. I'm looking forward to all of that. This was over about ten-year period, I guess, timeline. I guess some of the things I would like to see is some type of trail or bike path, walking around the city or around certain areas. Like I've seen in some cities, I know we can't duplicate what they have, but we can come close. We already have a somewhat a trail around Isah Esther and the canal. And it goes around the gravesite and it disappears because of the greenery there. Is there any thought of really expanding that in the future, over the next ten years? So that it would reach all the way to, say, Galaxy and then back around to Seacrest. You know what I'm getting at? It would be nice because, and I guess the other thing before you answer that, you were showing a section that would be a section of greenery. I was wondering, would dirt bikes be, is that a piece for the dirt bikes to perform in? You had a slide showing the greenery, the greenery next to the, I think it was the railroad track or something? You know what I'm talking about?
At the I ninety-five.
I ninety-five.
Yeah, I ninety-five. What in particular are you looking to have there? I have other question, but if you want to, I'll just say, I'll just stop at two, two more. One, the other one, the third one would be the two million dollars, I believe you said, spending on Isah Esther improvements and enhancements, or whatever you call it. Is that the turf and the bleachers, Casey, and the lighting? Is that what, or this in addition to that?
In addition to.
Ah, that's even better. Music to my ears, okay? If you could just kind of, do you have a feel for you might, what you might want to do there in addition to what you're already doing? And then lastly, the SRTAX, the SRTAX, you know, that's taxes is a bad word, you know? And well, it's a good word, but what are the people willing to pay for these amenities? And that's, that's a study in itself. But just address some of those issues and I'll be quiet.
Very well, appreciate the questions. When it comes to the connectivity question of extending what you currently have, you have a really great plan in the Complete Streets Plan that looks at a system comprehensively. So the idea would be to continue to implement that and look at the opportunities to address the very things that you mentioned, which I believe it does do that.
Yes, it does. So again, we have had conversations or discussions of expanding of the plan. And again, the Complete Streets Plan is the plan that we refer to as far as expanding on the greenways and blueways trails throughout the city. So those are some of the things that in the future, again, from some of the recommendations that we have received throughout the exercises that we've done with this plan is possibly expanding that trail. So those are some of the recommendations that we have received.
Very good.
In terms of the question associated with the natural area along ninety-five and trails and the ability of trails to support dirt bikes.
Yes.
Trails typically, most cities keep them as non-motorized vehicles for trails because you have pedestrians in there as well. And the motorized and pedestrians can create significant conflicts. So typical cities tend to keep those separate. And then the improvements to Hester Park. One of the things we heard about was from the community was a desire to improve some of the indoor spaces, potentially to create a esports center inside a community, as well as improving spaces to provide multi-generational programming for adults, active adults and youth as well. And so those are some of the resources allocated for that. But then to be further explored through a feasibility study to see what that cost is.
Okay, very good.
And then just to touch on Isah Esther, so can currently, right? Currently, the field improvement project is taking place, is in progress. But there is a second phase of that plan to improve Hester, where it will address the area towards the, I guess that would be the southeast section of the park, where parking and, you know, the tennis courts and other amenities in that area will be addressed. So again, we have looked into additional improvements of the Hester Center in addition to what is currently taking place now.
Okay. Did you have the dialogue with the ones you talked with about taxes? Would they be willing to take a bite in apple? Did you have that discussion?
That discussion would be further refined in that financial feasibility study, right? That really gets into that question and answers what voters would be willing to pay based on the projects that are also, that would also be recommended. So that's a unique process in itself, one that we've recommended for other communities that we've worked with, where they have passed general obligation bonds recently, was the City of Doral that passed a hundred and fifty million dollar Parks Bond. And that was the same process that they went through. That's a really critical part to answer some of the questions that we know that you have associated with your constituents and what they're willing to pay.
Right. That's all I have for now, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. Vice Mayor Cruz.
I have a whole page, but I'll try to make it quick. We did talk about one of the things. We talked about transportation. We talked about how I'm getting a lot of emails from my constituents that are, and you mentioned that before, that are not able to park at the beach by nine o'clock on a Saturday. So that's a legitimate concern. You know, a lot of times, we want to make sure that we're being equitable, where we're distributing the funding for parks on all parts of the city. I do have a question for staff. Where are we with the park impact fees? I know that's something that I proposed probably last year and the entire commission, you know, supported. I know it was mentioned that it was like within this timeframe, but I haven't heard anything back yet, so.
Hi, good evening. Amanda Rattigan, Planning and Zoning Director. The study is underway. We recently connected back with the consultant and we are expecting to have a final version for staff review within two or three weeks. So it should be coming before the board, I would say, maybe two or three weeks past that date.
Yeah, sure.
And then just to add on to that about the park impact fee. So the consultants for the park impact fees and Carlos have also been in communication with each other to make sure that the plans and information in our park system master plan are provided for that park impact fee as well. So they have had conversations.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have two separate fee studies out right now. One's the public safety and the other one's the park impact fee, so.
And this final plan was supplied to the park impact fee consultant. So they are taking one final look at it to make sure that they're accommodating what is proposed within this plan.
Thank you. You made a really great point and thank you for the presentation and the research and the time you took into this. You talked about federal grants, city manager. I know we have one staff member that's basically focused on grants throughout the city. Is that only one person for the whole city?
That's correct. We have one for, who is Tess LaCroix, but we also have a public safety grants manager in Jaclyn Smith. I could possibly look into maybe seeing if they can kind of tag team the project. I'd have to talk to the Chief of Police, Joe DeGiulio. But they both are the current grant managers for the city.
Thank you. No, I'm not trying to mix it too. I'm just asking if we, like if she has any support.
I look at it from, I look at it from this standpoint. Grants managers or grants coordinators are worth their weight in gold because the amount of money that they can actually attain for the city is obviously tenfold to whatever their salary is. So it's something that I wanted to look at it as far as exploring, maybe adding an additional person.
Even if it's a coordinator.
Even if it's a coordinator position, correct? I know there's, when I was up in Palm Beach County days, one of the things that they brought up that was bipartisan support was parks. So green space is a very, very important aspect right now. And, but as far as us actually doing any sort of appropriations, I know grants, we apply for those. We can get those with no money upfront, but the appropriation, they would like to see some sort of matching funding from the city side.
Yeah, that's a good point and something to think about. You talked about transportation, alternative modes of transportation, potentially a trolley. Or I know in West Palm, they have like an electric vehicle that takes people back and forth. And I think, I think Delray has it too. I don't go there much, but I think they do. With that being said, I know we've spoken with staff before about the TPA grants and making sure that, you know, I know we've spoken about it before, but making sure that we have a meeting with staff to talk about an actual application this coming year. It's kind of hard for me with the schedule right now. But maybe if we could just move forward with that meeting, like without me.
Yeah, I spoke with Mario actually last night about it. So we're definitely going to put together something. And I actually, I spoke with staff and my assistant Candace to where we're gonna pretty much put together a policy or protocol so we don't miss those opportunities in the future. I know obviously we had a lot of things going on over the past twelve months. I want to kind of formulate a plan going forward, whether it's TPA, having someone on the Tac Committee that's going to kind of take the reins on that, as well as state and federal appropriations and grants. There's money to be had. I know the mayor had brought up also the transportation grants and things like that on the federal side. There's quite a bit of work we got to get done.
Thank you. And then, I know you mentioned them all, but unfortunately, that's private property. So we can't really plan on doing anything park-related there. And then for the reissuing of the SRTAX, is that something that has to, like, can we maybe add that to a future agenda and figure out how we can, like what the process is? Or if it's just a thing that you could do with staff? But figuring out how we can make that a reality of potentially expanding it in the future to make sure that we have that funding? If it's, I know it's probably something that the voters have to vote on.
It is at the county level.
And is that something that people would vote on now, like the?
It is, but that's not something that we would initiate.
Be the county commission?
Yeah.
County commission, okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's kind of all I had. Thank you for, for the update. I was kind of concerned with the park impact fees, but I'm glad it's coming to an end. Those are pretty thorough explanation. The only thing that we did talk about in the meeting was, you know, for, obviously, we're looking at a lot of millions here, but we're also making assumptions. As you always have to do with data. We're making assumptions, for example, the Leisureville Park, it's at two million dollars. There's no way that that's going to be the case. And hopefully that would be the case for others. So, I mean, we, I wish, I wish we had more time in the day to dig deep into this and, and look at funding sources and all that. But, I mean, I guess we'll do what we can for now.
Carlos, you brought up the SRTAX from the county, right? I think it's a good idea and I, and it's, I wanted to remind myself, maybe as a city, we could kind of start mentioning that to some of our county representatives that we'd like to see that actually put back into place in the future. I know it's due to sunset in 2025. That's kind of like something that's kind of bearing down on a lot of municipalities. So it probably wouldn't be the worst idea to kind of try to reach out to our counterparts.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to comment because, but I want to hear from my colleagues first. But I want to circle back to transportation and the financial feasibility. But let's begin with Commissioner Tarkin first.
Casey Carley, or Carley, Carlos, thank you guys for getting this done. I've been, you know, gone through this many times. You know, I like the vision. My, my only question right now is, you know, you know, in reference to this proposed bond and the different options, what is the timeline for that if we were to move forward? Because that would have to, you know, go amongst the citizens to vote for. What does that timeline look like? Would we, would we do that separately as a special vote? Or would we combine that, you know, at the next presidential primary election? You know, what does that process entail?
If I can jump in, so we're still working on what that looks like. And it's a big effort on the staff's part in terms of building what that looks like. And it's about a year of work ahead of time before it would actually be on a ballot, at least a year. A year is an aggressive timeline. So we're, we're looking at 2024. We've also been in touch with the supervisor of elections to see what, what they're available, like what we're allowed to do through them. And so we're still building that out, but it's looking like 2024.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. The other question I had was for the Harvey Oyer Park. With those improvements, is it possible, and I don't know if it is or not, is it possible for some of those improvements to be related to the dredging through that channel right there?
Yeah, I'll take that question. So currently, we do have funding set aside to address the issue with the dredging in our channel off of Harvey Oyer. Again, we are working with Palm Beach County. Fortunately, they did attend the, not fortunately, but they did attend the Recreation and Parks Devires Board. We had a presentation from Palm Beach County that provided information that currently they're waiting on permitting in order to do that project. And unfortunately, due to turtle nest season, they have to wait until November in order to move forward with that project. So tentatively, we're looking at November of this year that we will see the dredging of that, of that project to take place. That's on the schedule.
The funds already allocated.
The funds are already allocated.
Okay, so this would just be other improvements?
Yes.
Got it, got it. And then the other, so the, there was an acquisition that I saw, number six, slide forty, that is land for Neighborhood Park in the southeast. What can, what land is that? It's a federal highway?
The idea is that there is no land targeted. It's just an area that is in need of a neighborhood park. So as the land, that would be a next step, right? Is to look for any land that is available. Opportunities are available to provide those services in that area, whether it's currently lacking.
Okay, so, so what I'm understanding is, you know, we're targeting that area because there's a lack of parks in that area with the amount, the density, I guess. Okay, that makes sense. But I'm looking at that, I'm like, I don't think there's any land there. Okay, so thank you for clarifying that. And then the Inner Coastal Nature Park, number four, slide forty. So that would be, so can you walk me through that? Because that's So that would be, so can you walk me through that? Because that's JC Park, I believe, right?
That's a, that's, well.
Am I looking at this wrong?
Let me back up a little bit. If we go back to what we heard from residents, right, the idea of identifying opportunities for natural passive areas. So that is a, there's portions in the city that are currently undeveloped, natural area lands. And the idea is, as much as we can, let's, let's target those for acquisition. Because it does a couple of things for us. First, it addresses that need from residents of addressing natural area passive space. We heard from residents that they wanted to protect and preserve natural areas. That's goal number two. And then three, we saw that compared to benchmarks, we are lower in the amount of parkland that we have in the city compared to peers. So it also helps us grow that. So it's really looking for opportunities throughout the city where that land is available. And that's one of them that appears to be undeveloped at the moment. It is, so it's something to be explored.
Okay, got it, got it. No, that makes sense. So when you say opportunity, are you saying that there's an opportunity for the neighboring parcels north or south of JC Park to acquire? Or are we just, are we just discussing not developing JC Park because of the mangroves and the waterway there?
No, I, I don't believe it's, it's not saying not to, not to develop a park, but again, obtaining information from the residents and through our, through the exercise that we conducted, just finding areas where there are deficiencies and then saying that in this area, let's develop this type of park in this area, but not necessarily identifying a specific piece of land.
Okay, okay, got it.
And this is part of, part of the visioning of the plan.
Sure. Nothing, there's, there's, I don't want to say nothing real here, but there's, this is all just a vision. There's, got it.
Correct.
Got it, okay. Because I'm, you know, I'm seeing some indicators here with, you know, with acquisitions and preservation. So, you know, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I think, you know, I, I would, I would agree with, you know, looking into how we can preserve, you know, especially on the intercoastal mangroves and everything like that. I know that south of Riverwalk, there's some mangroves there. There's some development that's in the pipeline, maybe, I don't know. But I think if the city could look at that, that might be an opportunity, you know, to preserve and you know, kind of react to what the residents are asking for in terms of keeping those natural areas. That's all I have. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Tarkin. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Carlos. I, we talked, there were some, I might, maybe it was on a slide where, when I stepped out, but you know, when we talked, we talked about some immediate recommendations that you had. You know, one of the, you know, big things that I recall from the summary of, of resident feedback was not knowing what is going on in the city and what we have to offer. And so I know there were some immediate recommendations that you had as far as, you know, developing a sort of park app or some ways that we can market our park system a little bit better to get the word out. So can you just touch on that just a little bit if, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but you know, that was something that we had talked about.
Sure. Yeah, in, in the report, we talk about a variety of steps that staff could take over the years in a prioritized fashion, right? What happens now, what happens in the future. So there's some things that can happen now in terms of enhancing the storytelling and communication and awareness. One of them is that app, developing an app that we've, we also develop with other communities that helps create that awareness for programs, services, also provides a tool for residents to communicate with staff about improvements to parks and what things are, they're doing well and what things could be improved. Also looking at, one of the immediate steps is cross promotion, no opportunity. So anytime we're doing an event, whether it's a special event or a program, let's use that opportunity to also let users know what else is coming on the line and what other opportunities are available. That's a very simple and powerful way to create awareness. And then another one that we included in there was the partnerships, right? Having our partners help us tell our story, whether it's schools, libraries, hospitals, et cetera. Those are all great partners that can help us achieve that goal as well. And there's a variety of others, but those are some of the ones that come to mind.
Okay. How do, I guess, and maybe this is for you, Casey, but how do we activate this? Like, I, this is it's great and it's a ton of information, but you know, like we just talked about, there's some immediate things that we can do. We have amazing programs that are going on. What, what is the Parks Department looking at kind of in the immediate future as, as far as, you know, implementing some of the recommendations?
So again, the first step is really having the plan adopted and then move forward. And again, now having this plan in place for the department, really for the next 10 years will provide a guiding principles and and really a roadmap for us to follow for the next 10 years. Again, and, and see it develop and achieve goals. So you know, moving forward, just having it to get, having the plan available to us, well then allows us to make positive decisions and stuff that we take in order to make the, the park system master plan the best for our residents.
Thank you. One of, one of the things that I know is, you know, was on, you know, in particular in my district is the connectivity and, you know, we talked about it as well, you know, the eco park is, is up and coming and it will, and, but there's, unless we drive to the eco park in a car, there's, it's not, minor road is not pedestrian friendly to get from the west end of the city to the east end of the city. And so I know we, we talked a lot about that, making that, you know, also kind of putting that on the priority that, you know, we're investing in these parks, but we also have to make sure that we're looking at ways that our residents can get to them that make sense. You know, we're going to spend a lot of money on an eco park and invest in, in a park, but then we're going to force people to have to drive there. So, so I just, that's one thing that, you know, that I had spoken in particular with them about, about making that, that connectivity a priority as well. You know, so that, you know, so that we have, you know, that availability for the residents. So so those are just kind of comments that I'm making, I guess, more than questions. But I did have one question for you and Vice Mayor, you brought up the mall. I'm glad you did because we talked a lot about that, you know, the perspective of that. What, in your experience with working with, you know, a private entity, how can the city convince them or how can the city work with a private entity to kind of hope and work with them to see if they can see a vision in making it more of a community residential space as opposed to just know it's our thing, we can do what, kind of what we want, which is what we expect to happen. But it, I would like to hear from you just a little bit about how in your experience, how you've been able to work with private entities to, to make that connection.
Sure. George, you want to?
Good evening. George Gentile with 2GHO. We're very happy to have helped you with this plan, but basically it's incentives that you would work with the developer with. We're doing a number of conversions of commercial centers because the retail market has changed. We're, we're using our phones and we're using our laptops and our iPads. And we're not driving too much, which is a good thing because we need to get some traffic off the roads. But we're working with a lot of antiquated shopping centers and turning them into mixed use. And in that process, we're, we're able to work with incentives and the, the city has to work with the developer and give them some incentives. Maybe it's a little bit increase in density. Maybe it's increase in, or some parking waivers or other things in, in, in return, getting open space and recreation that either is dedicated to the city and given to the city to manage and operate, or or at least a facility that's open to the public, even to the residents that may be there or the users that come to that, because it's still going to have a retail or commercial component. And I think that we heard the other day at the, at the meeting, and I think your, your director of planning is going to give you some very good news.
I could add to that. There are a couple of tools that we can use. Most recently, the commission just adopted our development agreement process. So that is something that we can utilize with the mall that has incentives built into it. So that's something new that we can implement for a project like that. But I also wanted to show that this is a partnership that we've grown with the mall over time. And we do this with a lot of our redevelopment projects. For example, when Riverwalk came in through that master plan process, we required a public access easement over what they're calling the waterfront promenade. So it's not necessarily a purchase of property because that could be cumbersome and difficult for the city to do. But through their planning process, their master planning, their redevelopment, the city does request some of these things through that process. And, and we have and will continue to, and will continue to develop different tools to do that.
Great example is the Riverwalk in Jupiter. A lot of the redevelopment programs in there, there was an incentive to give a dedication of property for the river, for the intercoastal waterway. And the developers came through and either dedicated or they developed the Riverwalk and they're maintaining it. So there's a combination of both public and private participation in those. And we have a full Riverwalk now, full access to the public on almost the entire US one quarter in the intercoastal. And, and that's because they worked with these incentives and these developer agreements.
And, and thank you for that because our code actually does allow, instead of our typical, how you think of a park impact fee that's done per unit, one of the options to satisfy that currently is a land dedication in lieu of a payment. So that is something that we could continue to work with in various sites, not just the mall, to do things like this.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, and we have been talking a lot about, you know, updating our, you know, incentives and stuff to, in various ways. So you know, I just encourage staff to just continue to be, you know, creative in what incentives we can do so that, you know, so that these projects that are coming into the city, we can, you know, maybe incorporate, you know, some, you know, community type you know, environments, because it's important. We're running out of, the city of Wayton Beach is running out of space, and so we have to get creative. So so thank you for bringing those ideas, you know, up front. And thank you, Amanda, for being flexible and talking about that. And then just one more quick thing, and I'm glad that you brought up the feasibility of parking at Oceanfront. That's something that I've heard a lot knocking on doors and talking to residents is that they pay for these permits and they can't get parking. And so I know that when I've gone to Lake Worth Beach, you know, they have designated parking spots specifically for residents. It doesn't always work out to every, you know, you can't, you can only have so many reserved spots for residents, but you know, different ways that, you know, that we can you know, kind of, you know, earmark or, you know, reserve some spaces for residents who pay the parking permit fees and who, you know, want to wake up on a Saturday morning and say, it's a beautiful day. I want to go to the beach. And they have to, they were too late. So, you know, look at different things that maybe other cities and municipalities are doing to offer to the residents, you know, available parking, especially when it's peak season. So you know, that feasibility of knowing what we can do to, to, you know, to make that more usable for our residents is key. So thank you for that. And I think that I've touched on everything I wanted to. So thank you so much.
Thank you. A couple of items for me. Thank you for your work and the presentation. I'll definitely be supporting this adoption of the master plan. I think that's step one. And obviously, we need to begin. Regarding the app that was mentioned, connectivity, I do wonder, we do have a city app. I don't know if we can just retrofit or upgrade our current app to have those functionalities. And so my question would be, in other cities where they do have a parks app, what functionality do they have? And so we know what to adopt. And you don't have to tell me now, but inform our staff so they can make those necessary upgrades, right?
Great.
We already have a city app. Why have two, three, four, five apps? If you can do it all in one place, it's just easier to market. That's number one. Number two, the grant writer, this is actually a topic, thank you for, was it you, Vice Mayor? This is a topic that I brought up before. Obviously, they bring in a whole lot more than what we pay them. So it's essential that we don't miss out on opportunities because we didn't have enough people on staff. So that's definitely something I support. Two other items that I want to gauge where my colleagues stand. And several of you brought up transportation, increasing mobility, particularly the Oceanfront Park. This is something that I've been, you know, asking myself and having discussions with other people for quite some time now. And, and I think you, Vice Mayor, was the one who said it, other cities do have a mobility option. And they use companies, one of them is, I believe is Circuit. What's the other one? Freebie is another one.
Downtowner. We used to have a shuttle, actually.
We used to have a shuttle and now, now it's, now it's very high tech. And, you know, people are using apps, so it's more on demand. People are able to advertise their local businesses on it. So if that is something that, you know, all of you are interested in exploring in, I would love to direct staff to begin an RFP on these mobility options. And this is something that benefits not just the beach and our parks, but it also benefits when we have major events. You know, listen, parking's limited at the beach. We're, we're not going to make more parking. So in much the same way in, in other places. So bring them there, right? They can park somewhere else and we will bring them to these locations. This is great for our major events. So not everybody's crowded in, in, in one parking location. So there's potential here for collaboration with the CRA. But if other cities are already doing this, it's working. I would be interested in exploring this officially and, you know, looking for a trial period. Let's just try a few vehicles, see how that goes, see what the reception is by the public. So that's, that's my thought on that. One more item, and then I can go back around to all of you. One of the items that you were recommending, Carlos, or the team was recommending, is that if we want to fund these projects, maybe a general obligation bond is the way to go. But in order for us to know that, you recommended a financial feasibility study to see if that is something that the public is willing to accept. And if yes, what, what's the tolerance level? I would like to know that. I would like to know if the public is interested and how much they're willing to go. Maybe they are, maybe they're not. So I would like if there is, you know, sufficient support in the commission to direct staff to begin that process. So we have that information. And then we can make a decision thereafter, but kind of hard to do that when we don't really know yet. So that's where I stand. Let's go around. If you have any questions or comments about what I just set out regarding mobility as well as a financial feasibility study. Commissioner Hay?
I just wanted to make one comment about that. We, in the past, years ago, we had the trolley. And we did a study and it was decided that we just didn't have the downtown to support it at that time. Maybe with these fresh ideas that we have now, maybe we can explore that again. I would be in favor of doing that because you know, it, it was a cost effective years ago when we had it. And maybe now it's time that we take a second look. So I would be in support of taking a second look at it.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a great point about making sure that it's financially sensible.
Right.
And I think, I don't know what the contract was back then with those red trolleys. As a kid, I took them all the time from the tri-rail to the mall and so on.
It was very costly.
Okay, so I think the key there is to, if we do an RFP, make sure that it is scalable. We don't need to begin with 10 vehicles. Let's begin with two or three. Let's just see how it's working and what's the adoption rate and all that. And as we grow, we grow this option. But, you know, let's begin with, with something.
That makes sense.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think that's a great idea and it's something that something that I think eventually we need, some sort of a trolley system or some sort of a circuit, whatever it is. However, you know, I'm thinking about the money, you know, where's the money going to come from? And all of these studies cost thousands and thousands of dollars. Can we maybe explore an internal survey like the CRA did, which, like, I could even do it. It's not that hard. But I'm just saying, for example, like somebody from staff could create a survey. And we, I'm sure our marketing team has a list of all the emails of the registered residents. And we could, you know, send it out to them. And it could be a quick turnaround where people could just click, a few clicks, and we can say, okay, are people even interested in responding to this? And maybe a feasibility study would be good. I don't know what the cost of that would be. But it might take a little bit longer. So I don't know. Something to consider also would be like the timeframe. How soon are we looking to do this? Are we wanting to do this at the point where, as you mentioned before, Commissioner, you know, when? are we looking to do this? Are we wanting to do this at the point where, as you mentioned before, Commissioner, you know, when we have more building or are we focusing on maybe the residents on the west side of the, of the road? Um, that need access to the beach. But it, I hate to say, but it all comes down to the money and to grants and knowing as the city manager mentioned in the past, you know, we can get the grants, but then we need to be able to fund part of it. Like we need to front the money. And a lot of times the grants will kind of like return the money to us after we front the money. So, you know, it's an opportunity and maybe um, not trying to like not privatize it, but when we think of an RFP, um, it is a, a, a good idea. At the same time, could we maybe try a pilot program? Like an internal pilot program where we have staff that gets paid whatever, you know, similar to what, let's say, code enforcement people make or, or some of our utility drivers make. Um, maybe using two cars, maybe potentially electric vehicles that don't cost um, money on gas that we can charge across the street from City Hall. Just, just thinking out loud. Um, and maybe doing a pilot program for maybe a six months or so and figuring out, you know, the data of like, how's, how often do we use that? Um, are, are we using an app? I mean, I know we also have Uber and something that, that people can use, but maybe making it for the city. Just thinking out loud. I don't know what y'all think about that, but.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Commissioner Turkin?
So I, I, I think this is a great topic of conversation and it's funny because in the last week or two, I've spoken with some local businesses, 500 Ocean Cafe being one of them who has a trolley cart that they'll utilize to bring people to the beach. And if we look and compare to our neighboring cities, I think, um, what do they have in Delray? They had a, the Delray Marketplace, right? Obviously that failed the first time and, and they're, you know, they're back at the drawing board. But one of the things that they looked at was, you know, providing free transportation to the beach for that similar reason. You know, there's um, other projects going on the east side, you know, the homing in. Um, I know those new owners had also mentioned providing a trolley service to the beach. So I, I think there's some type of collaboration effort that we can do, you know, combining local businesses because everyone wins, right? If I can go catch a trolley, I just go to 500 Ocean Cafe, grab a coffee, I'm gonna go run to the beach, right? But then I also eliminate the liability, you know, some liability from the city. And so I, I don't know if like an internal pilot program would be the best because I think if something happens, then we're liable. Um, but I, I do like the idea of looking into this and seeing how we can collaborate with our local businesses, even if it's an assistance for them to pilot this, you know, and that way we don't burden all the costs. You know, we help local businesses and then also eliminate liability. But I, I, I think this is a great idea. I think just navigating how it can work for everyone. Um, you know, is, is kind of where I'm at.
Absolutely. And from my understanding, these companies actually work with local businesses, again, to advertise their local business in there, which then offsets the cost, actually. So I, I, I can definitely see that working. Uh, was there anything else? No, that was it. All right. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to seeing what is out there. I mean, it's been a long time since we had a trolley system and so things have changed, things have, um, you know, availability and, and options. And um, I know at some point we looked at, you know, scooters and things like that, but you know, I don't think that that's as usable as um, you know, getting somebody to a beach and, you know, just like Commissioner Turkin said about, you know, businesses using it. You know, I think, you know, Delray uh, the marketplace, you know, somebody's gonna go there and they're gonna maybe grab food before they go to the beach and they're gonna come back and maybe, you know, stay. So they're benefiting from uh, from being part of that service. So I think looking at different options and looking at what our neighboring cities even do, um, but also looking at what options are out there. I think we'd probably be surprised as to what's out there. So I'm open to looking into that. I don't know if we necessarily need to go to the length of an RFP at this point without knowing like what our options are. Um, because I, I don't, I would just rather like explore what the options are instead of homing in on particular ones, but that's just my um, thought. And then we also um, spoke, you were also talking about uh, feasibility. And I think we've spent all this money and we've invested in doing this um, park master plan and what good is that if we don't know what our residents are willing to pay? So I think that as much as I hate spending money to find out how we're gonna spend money, um, I think we need to know um, really legitimately what the residents are willing to do. And so you know, this is all for nothing if we don't get that feedback from the residents and we do it right. Um, so uh, so that's, those are my thoughts on that, so.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I, I think you, you said it much better than I did, which is, you know, when I said RFP, what I really want is, I want to know what our options are. I want to know why one company uh, might be better than another. What services does one provide that another does and how they plan to fund or what the cost will be and if they can scale, if they can. So these are all the questions I have and I would love to see a presentation from a variety of companies. Uh, and I would love to see also an Excel just comparison, you know, just a chart says, here's what this company can do and the other one can't. And vice versa. So we can kind of have a better sense of direction thereafter. Um, and thank you for also addressing the financial feasibility. Uh, I agree with you. I'm, I'm very curious what the public is willing to do. Uh, it doesn't mean that we're gonna do a bond. It just means how feasible is the bond and what the tolerance level is. Carlos, did I understand that correctly? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
And consistent with other communities in Florida do to get to that step.
Okay. I want to hear from my colleagues. I, we addressed the transportation, but not all of us addressed the, the financial feasibility aspect. Is this something that the rest of you would be, would be open uh, to pursuing? All right, so I have a yes.
Yes.
From Vice Mayor and Commissioner Hay also, and Commissioner Turkin is a yes. So I believe that is consensus in two items, uh, to give direction to staff to explore the financial feasibility for Geo Parks Bond uh, as well as to explore our mobility options uh, for, what do we, what do we call this? Local transport, local transportation, local mobility? What's the proper term?
If, if I could add to this conversation, just a, a couple of points. So the city does have a complete streets plan that does have these recommendations set out in there. We would love to do a workshop on mobility all, all together because there are different levels of this. Um, we, we've talked about micro mobility, which are the things like the scooters. Um, trolleys are very different than the cars for hire, like something like Uber. Um, there are nonprofits that do this. There are, um, there are grants. So there, there's a huge plethora of different options. So I think when uh, the commission is ready, uh, us in development would love to have a very holistic conversation about this. There's a few topics. We've got housing on the block for you guys and we have mobility.
We have a lot of workshop.
Yes, we are, we are ready to talk about a lot of these things.
So, I mean, I, I welcome the broader transportation conversation. If it's a workshop, it's a workshop. Um, but.
Only because I, I, I just want to make sure that the commission has a full understanding of all of the different levels and projects that are already set in this plan. If it is an update to that, we can do that. If it is a portion of recommendations that we move forward with. This was also the plan that was developed on the basis of a mobility fee um, that we started and then stopped. So there's a lot, a lot in there. Um, just, you know, more, more food for thought.
Excellent. And um, again, but it doesn't mean we can't begin something, even if it is just gathering all the information so we can make informed decisions. Uh, so we have consensus on those two items. Uh, now, our senior planner just mentioned the idea of having a transportation workshop. Is that something my colleagues are interested in so we can have staff begin scheduling that? It sounds like a yes from everybody.
Yes, and I, additional to that, we do have a um, Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, which who is our partner um, in these types of, of planning. So I would highly encourage that if, if and when we do that workshop, that we invite Valerie and her team to come in and maybe give a presentation of, of how we fit into the county's plans.
Yep. I'm gonna ask staff to please coordinate with them. That is an excellent idea. Are there any other questions for uh, Carlos or George while they're here?
I hate, like, I, I know it's late, but last thing.
Well, they're here. We don't want to make them keep coming back, so.
Can, can, can you, I think, I, I want to make sure I'm correct, but was it 700 people that responded to the survey? Out of like about eighty, eighty thousand residents or so, we have?
The strongest technique that we use is a statistically valid survey because it's not so much about the response, it's about the confidence level. So we have a 95% confidence level on the responses with a 3.5% margin of error. So that suggests that if you gave this random survey to a hundred people, 95 would say the same thing, right? It's statistics. So that's, that's the, the accurate response is the level of content, confidence of a statistically valid survey.
Yes, but that's also making assumptions, right?
Based on.
And I, I don't, sorry, just when I think about my neighbors and my constituents, the people I talk to, like, nobody really even, not a lot of people mentioned, like, I got the survey, I didn't get the survey. So if we move forward, and this is just for my opinion, um, and you all can agree or disagree, but if we do move forward with the financial feasibility, I would like to make sure that we extend that survey to all of our residents to make sure that it's accurate and we're not making assumptions on the data, you know. I think that would be, it would make common sense. That's all. Thank you so much for, for your time. And that's the last thing I had, just because I, when I saw the number 700 respondents and we have eighty, eighty thousand plus residents, um, are we really getting a, a fair feedback from our residents?
Sure. And if I can just respond to that, that's the reason we use that triangulated approach, right? That's the reason we use qualitative, quantitative observation. Because we're looking for the findings from all these different techniques and see where things overlap. So we're, we're confident in our, in our findings.
I, I'm not saying that you shouldn't be. That, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not trying to say anything negative about this. This is great. Um, I was just saying in the future, for the financial, thank you.
Sorry, can I just make one?
Yes.
So, sorry.
I heard something.
No, no, well, and, and it's my understanding that the reason that that happened that way, it, it didn't go out, it's not, it didn't go out to 80,000 people and only 700 responded. It was targeted to particular, wasn't it? It was targeted, you randomly sent it to various residents to get sporadic feedback and use that as part of your data. It's, this didn't go to 80,000 people, only 700 responded, right?
Correct. It's, it's sent random and all we need is a random response matched to the demographics. So the fact that it's random and match to the demographics, make it statistically.
And then I, I'm sorry, just one other thing, just to touch on is that, so we did do the statistically valid survey and went out for the needs assessment. But we also gave an option for an online survey that was, that staff uh, advertised and publicized to, to, to all of the residents that could uh, respond to the same questions that were in the survey. And they kind of take those answers and kind of compare them as well. So again, all the residents had an opportunity to respond to, to answer the survey. But again, they take the statistically valid survey for a randomly selected uh, residents.
But I agree with Vice Mayor. When we do any feasibility studies, we should be, it should be targeting the entire city. So I don't, I think that was a different scenario, I think, so.
You send it with a water bill. You're getting, you're getting a lot of people, yeah. Put it on the marquee too.
Yeah, we will do what we can to maximize public participation.
Broaden in the, 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 the sample base. That's all that's been said.
Well said. Now, before we take a vote, we need public comment on this item. Um, so if you would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium now. Is there anybody in the chambers? Seeing none, we're gonna go to those online. Uh, IT, do we have anybody online?
What?
Mr. Mayor, I can tell you we have no hands on, raised.
We have no hands raised. Public comments on this item are now closed. Public comments are closed, city manager. All right, we have exhausted the questions. We have a motion to
Motion to approve.
R23-035. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz, a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Congratulations. Now we have a system parks master plan.
I just, one, one thirty seconds if I could.
Yes.
I, I will tell you that uh, we were very pleased to be your consultants on this. I want to thank my cohort, Carlos Perez, Perez Planning Design and the other consultants that worked with us. But I have to tell you, you have one of the best staffs in recreation that we've worked with. And I, I want to compliment Casey and staff. Um, and uh, they, they did a tremendous job and they made our job a lot easier. So, thank you all very much.
Excellent.
Good for the staff.
And then just one last point, just want to thank the, the commission for uh, supporting our master plan and supporting this process. Again, we met with as many residents as we could. We had focus groups, we had our community input meeting. So again, it's not just our plan. It is the, the plan of the residents. And again, just, uh, again, thank you to George and Carlos for all the hard work. We, we've been at this for about 10 months now. And again, it's just exciting to see the plan finally come. And then again, you guys supporting it for adoption. So again, also um, one last thing, just thank you to all the departments too that participated in this. Amanda, uh, we, we joked about me moving in all over her side because again, a lot of it was intertwined with what goes on with the master plan and public works. Uh, the CIP, city manager, just everyone really participating and really getting involved with this plan in order to make it the best for our residents. So I just want to thank everyone that was involved.
Any closing comments from my colleagues?
I do. I forgot to mention it uh, earlier at the beginning of the meeting. I just wanted to thank all of uh, city staff, city manager, fire chief, uh, not police chief, you didn't make it, um, for attending St. Andrews yesterday. We had a, a really good town hall there. Didn't know what to expect. A lot of turnout. And it was uh, you know, from, from the general manager to the president, they, they haven't had city officials come there and, and just hear out the residents since they can remember. So I think a couple, a couple of commissions ago. So it was uh, very refreshing, a lot of good feedback. Be sharing that with uh, my colleagues next time we're here. And um, thank you all again.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Hay?
Yes, uh, I would like to just add for future um, agenda items because I'm getting a lot of questions. And I would just like to have a, a, a traffic camera presentation because I'm getting a lot of questions about that. What's, what's the impact? What's it doing? What's, what's the numbers? You know, all that kind of stuff. So I think it's about time uh, that, that we have another presentation on, on where do we stand? How, how is it, how effective is it? Those kind of issues that we need to discuss.
The red light cameras?
The red light camera.
Yeah, I, I brought, I brought that up before and then uh,
But we need to move it up on the list.
Yeah, I, I agree because I think we're the only city in the county that's still
The only city.
That still does it.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm gonna ask if you guys please add that on the next agenda.
Yes.
Can we put it on for discussion at the next agenda? Is that what you're saying?
No, next agenda, when, next meeting, when we have our next meeting, bring it up, bring it up. Yes.
It's, I, I can add it. I'll just add it.
For future, to a future agenda.
Yeah, we'll find a, uh, we'll find a date most likely. Um, it'll take the um, police department to gather the analytics. I'm guessing probably a, a month or two.
Can we add how much the city gets from those?
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll add the revenue, we'll add the uh, the gross revenues and the net revenues we get because obviously there's a cost, ATC, so.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
They're moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? All right, there's a second. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you for making this meeting.